Welcome back to our meeting. It is now seven twenty-eight, we're convening from closed session. Janet, uh... Hold on, uh... Okay, item E, we're convening to open session. Announcing F, announce any actions taken in closed session, Carlos?
A motion of, uh, in closed session, a motion of trustee Lorenzo Calderon, and seconded by trustee Enrique Alvarado. The board approved a settlement and release agreement between the board and two different employees in the classification of SLPs regarding wage claims by the following roll call vote. Trustee Magallanes, yes. Trustee Romero, yes. Trustee Alvarado, yes. Trustee Lorenzo Calderon, yes. And trustee Ciro Calderon, yes.
Okay, that was item F, announcements of actions taken in closed session. Item G, comments from the public. The board will take any and all comments from the public related to an item on the agenda or any item of district business that is not on the agenda. Ms. Burgos?
We do have one public comment, and that's from Sonia Redona. And Mr. Perez will try to get her on now.
Thank you.
Hello, we don't have Sonia Redona connected on the Zoom meeting. Good evening, um... Let me see if I can connect her for her to connect. I don't know if we have a written statement from Sonia Redona.
Ms. Burgos?
We do not have a written statement from her.
Okay, if the board feels that maybe we could come back when Ms...
Yeah, welcome back.
Whenever she's online, we can always go back to her. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that, Ms. Burgos, is that everything? Is that all, is that all the comments?
Yes, there was only one submitted.
Okay.
And we'll try to call Mr. Redona right now.
Thank you. As soon as she's online, ready to go, we'll give her the time. Thank you. Okay, H, presentations, H one, food services program. There he is.
Gilbert, can you hear me? Test, test. Gilbert, can you hear us?
He's muted.
He's unmute.
Gilbert, can you hear us?
You're... The board should be looking...
You're gonna have it?
Gilbert, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, all right. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, so here we go. So, all right, can we project our presentation? I don't know. Is Sonia there waiting? Is Sonia there?
She's coming if you're here.
Okay, you want me to wait and present, or you want me to...
I'll let Sonia just come and wait.
Want me to continue?
We don't have Sonia in attendance yet today.
Go ahead, continue.
All right, so, well, okay, so we do have Gilbert. Okay, so, all right, Gilbert, so get ready. So, good evening, members of the board, colleagues, everyone in attendance. My name is Cesar Vega, your Assistant Superintendent of Business. And today we have a presentation on food services. It's a presentation that, you know, was requested, that we presented so that there is more awareness as to what the food services program does. There you go. So, again, it's, you know, to bring awareness about what we do right now in light of the pandemic, and also, you know, throughout the years, how food services functions, and what is the impact to our budget as well. So, I prepared this brief presentation so that, you know, we can have a, maybe a summary of what we do, and hopefully I can answer some questions as we go. But let me start by just saying that, when it comes to food services, this is a very complex program. It is a federally mandated program, but it can be very confusing because there are so many moving parts that we need to, you know, adhere to. Whether it's, you know, the economical, the fiscal part of it, the competitive foods that we need to serve. There are so many variables to this program that oftentimes people don't realize how complex it is. All right, so, everything that we do, board, comes directly under the twenty-ten Hunger, Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of twenty-ten. So, back in twenty-ten, then First Lady Michelle Obama introduced new legislature and approved this act in which, you know, pretty much changed how everything that we did in food services, it just revolutionized everything. And the whole purpose of that is to create meals, create programs that, you know, prevent child obesity. You know, it's more about eating healthy now. If you recall, you know, even during my high school days, you know, the food that we used to use in the cafeteria was totally different than the food that is, you know, being done now. Although Gilbert has done a pretty good job in coming together and, you know, producing meals that are really, really appetizing. But do know that this is how we are regulated. This is where everything starts for us. And everything is channeled through the National School Lunch Program, which, you know, it really does provide a great benefit to the community because, look, we are providing sometimes, you know, some of the healthiest meals that kids eat throughout the day. And statistics show that kids that are well-fed, that are, you know, that eat nutritious, balanced meals, they learn more in the classroom. So, there are great benefits to everything that we do in food services because, again, we provide balanced meals that are nutritious and, you know, really does prevent child obesity. Again, like I said, this is a federally funded program. So, we all know the general fund, which is Fund Zero One Zero, or Zero One. This, every money that is channeled from this program is deposited and accounted for in Fund Thirteen or One Thirty, as we call it here. So, that's where most of our revenues, that's where everything goes. Like I said, it's regulated through the USDA. So, everything that we do and we comply to, you know, whether it's an audit, whether it's, you know, making sure that we are, you know, providing the meals that we need to be providing, everything is regulated through the United States Department of Agriculture. So, Gilbert, you want to talk about the compliance aspect of it? What is SB one thirty-eight and SB two fifty when it comes to universal feeding and the no lunch shaming bill and negative balances? Do you want to talk about that?
Yes, sir. SB one thirty-eight actually came into effect a couple of years ago, where any high poverty, uh, school needs to apply for what we, what we're currently doing, uh, Community Eligibility, Community Eligibility Provision, where it's universal free feeding for all the students. We're actually ahead of the game. We've been on it since twenty-fourteen. We were one of the early adopters that was approved by the board a long time ago. We went transition from Provision Two, where we were getting reimbursement at seventy-seven to seventy-nine percent free rate. And under CEP, we've been progressive, been able to increase our reimbursement rate, you know, from the initial year, you know, at the eighty-two percent rate, to currently where we're at a hundred percent free rate. So, we are early adopters, we're way before SB one thirty-eight became a land. And that's one of the reasons we're able to feed all our students reimbursable meals and, you know, everybody meals without having to charge anybody. SB two fifty, that's also relatively new regulation that came up, but we've been ahead of the game. But again, because we're Provision Two, you know, we didn't have negative balances. However, there was lunch shaming at the time because we had, you know, those windows where kids can get carne asada, you know, quesadillas, carne asada, you know, tortas and stuff like that. We eliminated it as soon as it started here. We went to, everybody, you know, was getting fed the same thing. We were serving carne asada actually as part of reimbursable meal. So, not only were the kid, you know, we took away that line, so there was no lunch shaming. Everybody getting reimbursable meal, but we didn't take away the food. We just provided the food to everybody and made it compliant. So, instead of quesadilla, we had a regular flour tortilla. We had now had a whole grain, you know, tortilla, which is, you know, one of the huge tweaks to the menu to be able to be compliant and, you know, be able to provide a safe space for everybody to be able to eat a reimbursable meal and not feel embarrassed.
Thank you, Gilbert. And Gilbert, I know that you and Maribel and here in the Business Department, we work hand in hand when it comes to administrative reviews. And board, when, this is, an administrative review is the audit process that we go through every three years. And Gilbert, how difficult is this process? Can you put in context how intensive an administrative review is?
Very intensive. They check everything. They check, are we compliant with the meals we're serving? Are we serving all components? Are we serving the, you know, are they made from the approved ingredients? You know, in this case, like whole grain. You know, are we, you know, when it comes to grains? Are, you know, they check our funds, you know, they check our compliance with procurement. They check, they, everything. They do, they go, you know, they actually visit sites. They see how we distribute the meals. Our staff, you know, we, you know, it's our paperwork, right? Because our staff is what they're supposed to be doing. Just to give you an idea how important it is, first year started here, six years ago, we were doing cleanup. They actually took away three months worth of funding because we were, you know, we didn't have the proper documentation. We didn't have the proper backup, you know, to justify what we were claiming. And they took away three months of funding. And that hasn't happened since, you know, we haven't had accident, you know, administrative reviews, all of them, had to pass, no problems whatsoever. And, but, you know, even though it's supposed to be every three years, we get those surprises, you know. We've gotten, uh, badly, uh, justified every year because we do so many different programs. Whether they're checking our regular school program, which includes a regular, initially a regular breakfast and snack, or, you know, now, you know, they do a separate year for our supper and sometimes even our supper. So, yeah, they check us all the time and we're definitely doing very well with our compliance.
Thank you, Gilbert. What, when are we due next for another administrative review?
They usually let us know back in summer, COVID, closure, delayed it. You know, we should be getting one next year. We won't know till around June. But again, sometimes they do surprise investigations. A few years back, we were between an audit and, I believe, you know, did a congressional investigation report, trying to say that we mismanaged funds. You know, then we gave them all the information, we were in the audit. They double-checked our work and we were fine, we were perfect. So, they check us at any time, doesn't have to be, you know, the particular schedule that you're, that you set. Yes, they try to do it every three years, but sometimes they see us more often, or sometimes it's still like right now because it slowed it down, but still people are being checked.
Excellent, Gilbert. Thank you for that insight. So, board, the way the program works, obviously, every meal that we provide is reimbursable, okay? And even though we are part of a community eligibility provision program, CEP as we call it, typically the way the program works, and they're outside of that program, is that everybody either pays or pays a portion of a meal or are completely free. So, we don't have to do that here because we qualify for one hundred percent, you know, providing the meals to all of our kids. Isn't that correct, Gilbert?
That is correct, sir.
So, can you share with the board that difference between Provision Two, Community Eligibility Program, and the Seamless Summer Program? When do we apply those programs, and which one are we under right now?
Okay, so, Seamless Summer Option, what used to be called Seamless Summer Feeding Option, we actually brought it to a board around six years ago to feed students during summertime. We used to have a really low reimbursement rate the months of July and August. That was because under the regular either provision, you know, when we go by applications, we were getting all our meals reimbursed at a pay rate, which is around twenty-five cents per meal. That was what they were reimbursing us for feeding our students. By operating the Seamless Summer Option, back then, they gave us a higher reimbursement rate, which was like right now, three seventy-five. Back then, it was like three forty for lunch and about two twenty for breakfast. So, we obviously got, you know, and that was for everybody free. And we did that for a couple of years until our Community Eligibility Provision brought us to a hundred percent, then we stopped it. Also, during that time, we stopped it because we started having security issues and we started, you know, closing down the schools a little bit and redirecting traffic through the main offices. But, you know, normally Seamless Summer Option is only offered in the summer to provide summer feeding. What we've, you know, even though we have experience on that, what we've done in the past for summer feeding is just created as a year on school. And, uh... As far as Provision Two, you know, Provision Two, in order to qualify for that, you know, if you're a high quality school, which we were back then and still are, you know, they determined what reimbursement rate you had based on the free reduced and paid participation per month. So, every month was slightly different reimbursement rates. And it was based on meal applications, so parents were expected to turn in free and reduced meal applications. We also did direct certification, where we looked at CalFresh and CalWorks. And we also checked with our liaisons and got certified foster homeless, migrant, you know, list. And we certified students that way. Under Community Eligibility Provision, which we started doing in twenty-fourteen, we eliminated meal applications. We got to increase our reimbursement rate and we only look now at direct certification, which is a CalWorks, CalFresh. And for the last couple of years, we've been looking at Medi-Cal rates and that now, and also, you know, foster homeless and migrant, you know, list that we get from our liaisons here.
Thank you, Gilbert. And just for reference, board, the reimbursement rates, they're right there so that you know how much money we get for every meal that, whether it's breakfast, lunch or supper, that's the rate that we get for every meal that we serve. So, Gilbert, I know that, you know, prior to the pandemic, you know, the traditional point-of-sale terminal system, you know, that we use at schools, can you share with the board, you know, where are we with the IDs that we normally provide to students? Can you share with the board what a POS system is and how it works prior to the pandemic?
Yes, it's a computer system we have. We have it as a laptop, so it's something that's portable. The reason we chose a laptop, so that we can put extra points of service, extra lines to feed students throughout the campuses and the junior high school and the middle schools and high schools. At the elementary schools, we have them at the, you know, at the end of the serving line. And what it does, it accounts for every meal that we give out. So, as every student passes through, we identify the student either by getting their name and doing a name search, or scanning an ID card, or, you know, the last couple of years, doing a biometric scan, which is just a fingerprint. And this would identify the student as somebody taking a meal. The software would then tab, you know, gather all that information in real time. It, you know, we were able to observe it. It made sure that there was no double-dipping, that no students were going from, you know, like in a junior, in middle school or high school, going from site to site. Because our software would prevent us from being able to, you know, would flag it as somebody already took a meal. And, you know, and at the end, it helps us with our report, reporting that we have to do, edit checks that we have to do to be compliant with doing our claims with the state and getting reimbursed for every meal that we feed.
Thank you, Gilbert. So, and that is important to note, board, because out of those point-of-sale systems, those computers produce reports that we in turn submit to the state for reimbursement. Right, Gilbert?
That's correct.
All right, so, any questions thus far?
What's the process now with COVID pandemic?
That's exactly what that slide is all about. So, you know, now that, you know, as you know, we were suddenly forced to close back in March twenty-twenty, you know, we went from a point-of-sale distribution system to now, we're not using any of those laptops or technology. Now, we are a meal distribution center, right, Gilbert?
That's correct.
Can you talk about the process that we go through every single day to deliver meals to community?
Yes, so, there's a... When, as soon as we, you know, as soon as we knew that we were going to start school, we were very nervous at the beginning of the school year because they didn't give us any idea that we're going to be able to operate under Seamless Summer Option. Had we not been able to operate under Seamless Summer Option, SSO, we would have had to, you know, only feed our students and we would have to make sure that our students were eating at the school site. So, you would see probably setups, kind of like you see at restaurants, that feed, you know, outdoors in order to be able to feed the kids. And it would have to be breakfast during breakfast time, lunch during lunchtime, supper during supper time. Because they allow us, because they offered waivers under Seamless Summer Option, we went ahead and applied, you know, for the Seamless Summer Option to continue doing feeding like we did during the initial closure so we can continue doing feeding through this twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. With that, however, under Seamless Summer Option, not, we're, we can't restrict only collect-scientific school district students. We have to feed any child eighteen and under that comes to our door. You know, what the Seamless Summer Option, well, I know there's in a future slide, so I'll wait for any questions right now.
So, I think it's important to note, Gilbert, that right now, we're not asking for any type of identification, or are we?
That's correct. No, we're not.
Why is that?
Because, you know, right now, all we need to know is how many students, how many children, you know, are requesting meals for. That's one of the waivers that we signed up for, to be able to allow, you know, students to stay at home, that are collect-scientific school students, stay at home and allow a parent to pick up meals. Otherwise, the student would have to be in the car, every single student that they're picking up meals for. And that would be very disruptive to the, to the, to the virtual, you know, learning that they were doing.
So, Gilbert, you know, we have received a number of questions regarding, you know, how we are handling the walk-up and drive-through distribution program. So, we know that we are now serving or prepping meals four days a week. However, Thursdays, we also distribute Friday's meals, every Thursday. So, this is a new change that we started just, you know, when we came back from the winter break. Gilbert, I think it's important for the board to understand that you as a director and we in the Business Department, we provide the necessary personal protective equipment and we take all the precautions that we need to take to make sure that we account for the safety of our, you know, food service workers. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, sir.
So, talk about, so, for instance, you know, walk me through the process of, you know, we are, Cesar Chavez, we have a line of vehicles that, you know, enter and go through a turnabout and come back and pick up meals. How are the meals being handed out? Is there, are there any barriers in between, you know, the vehicles and the personnel? Or how are we protecting our personnel?
Our personnel, they have their own personal protective equipment that we provide, face shields, disposable masks, vinyl gloves, disposable plastic aprons. We've offered goggles, we've handed out and offered goggles for those who want them, but, you know, they mostly prefer the face shields for those who do get them. Then, we don't have contact with the cars. We put the, our employees will put the meals on a cart with wheels. They'll get it close to the cart, step back. The person in the vehicle rolls down their window, reaches out, grabs the bags in there and drives off. They pull it back and they, you know, get it, you know, add the meals for the next car and so forth and so on.
So, this process is executed at every single site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how big would you say the vehicle is, the cart, the little cart?
It's a standard cart. It's about, I don't know, two by, three by, three by five, three by six, I don't know.
So, from the moment, so what I'm trying to come up with is, are we, when we hand out those meals, when we put those meals on that cart, by the time they are, you know, pushed over, you know, towards the person in the vehicle, you think there is about six feet of distance between them?
Most definitely.
Okay. Have there been any complaints about any other type of, you know, PPE equipment that they need or any other, anything else that maybe staff have requested?
Anytime they make a request, immediately we'll retard to our vendors and we'll get the equipment that they desire. I do rounds myself and I'll pick meals to make sure that, you know, safe procedures are being followed and also to check on compliance with the meals that are being distributed.
Okay, so...
Our staff, you know, are always, you know, very professional, very compliant, and they're protecting themselves. That regularly and our staff, uh, you know, are always, you know, very professional, very compliant and um they're protecting themselves.
So one of the things that, you know, we've discussed Gilbert and that we agreed on is that, you know, we were going to support our staff. By making more frequent visits to our sites. Uh, how many times a week do you go to the sites?
Um, I, I try to go uh again to do uh, you know, to pick up meals, to check it out. Um, I also, we meet weekly, we meet weekly uh via Zoom. Um, uh, we, we, the supervisor, you know, and the office staff, you know, are, myself, we're communicating constantly with our. Employees, you know, I'm available uh for them uh with my phone and um, you know, we're. Trying to keep safe and keeping a distance, but at the same time, you know, making sure that they're aware that we're there to help them and that. Um, you know, we're hearing what they need and what their uh concerns are and addressing those concerns and those needs immediately.
So do you meet with your staff at least once a week?
Yeah, weekly.
Okay. How many times do you physically go to the sites?
Um, about once a week.
Okay, and your supervisor as well?
Uh, she does it a little bit more often, but um, you know, we, we're trying to keep as much as possible. Uh, different staff, us only, you know, there are bubbles within each site. Um, there was a, there's been several instances in other school sites. Another school districts were district-wide, they've had to shut down uh because of exposure. As you know, now with the laws, you know, just being in the same building or shut down a building if somebody came in contact. Um, we're trying to limit, that's why, you know, I, I, if I do more than, if I do. Every day different side, if there's a potential of having a closed district wide and not being able to serve any of our students. Um, unfortunately, it's, it's very difficult um to, to be present face to face. Even uh when we had our, our meeting uh with all our, our employees uh to discuss a lot of their concerns. Uh, last year, um, I was very nervous even though we're outside and, you know, for, as much as we wanna stay uh. Distant, you know, people tend to, you know, group up and little, and little, there's a lot of contact in it. And with this pandemic, you need to avoid that uh, uh as much as possible. Um, but you know, we are meeting weekly, you know, by Zoom. Uh, we pick the slowest date, we call each other, uh, we're available as much as possible, you know. And um, you know, we're, we're, uh, we're available.
Thank you Gilbert. So. So one of the questions that we've been asked before Gilbert is uh double dipping, you know. How do we know that, you know, a vehicle that goes over to Cesar Chavez? How do we know that that same vehicle is not going to another site? And if so, how do we make sure that we, that, you know, these individuals are not double dipping?
We, um, under seamless summer option, we, we don't, uh, for example, if you look at Central, uh, uh, El Centro. They have uh four different schools that are, school districts that are providing, that have students in El Centro. Um, different schools that are feeding there, three different schools that are feeding there. We have Central High School. El Centro Elementary School District and we have Meadows feeding there also. In uh, kinda like neighborhood house feeds here in Collexico. Uh, they don't, they don't communicate between districts, there's no way to track it under seamless summer option. Um, and you know, nobody is really tracking that and we're not expected to under seamless summer option. Um. When we start operating uh onsite schooling, we will be operating two different programs. Not only the regular uh breakfast and lunch program that we've been doing, uh, you know, years past, but also seamless summer option. When we do the, the onsite uh feeding, those will be doing, um, like you showed in the previous slides. Using our POS software, uh, tracking all the meals, cause that's required and we have to identify each and every student. From Collex Unified School District uh that grabs a meal. However, that same student, if he also wants to grab a seamless summer option and double dip. It's allowed and it's nothing that we can do to keep him from doing that. And any stu-, any uh, any uh child eighteen and under is, is uh. Not, is, is allowed, is not only allowed, but they're entitled to a meal that we have.
And we are getting reimbursed for every meal regardless?
Every single meal is being reimbursed and that's how we're able to, um, even with a lot of schools operating in the red. Uh, you know, California and uh, uh, across the country, we've been doing very well here in Collex Unified School District.
So I know that, you know, when it comes to guidelines, we always fall under the USDA. And you know, that's where we submit our applications through, you know, the challenges services in California that, you know. Get filtered all the way up to the USDA. What are the waivers? Can you talk about what waivers are we now currently operating under?
Out of all those waivers you have out there in front of you, uh, we're, we're doing a little bit less than half. Um, we're doing, for example, uh Response fifty-nine, which that one's the, the one that allows us to do seamless summer option. Operate under seamless summer option. Uh, normally seamless summer option only. Uh, you're only able to do that during the winter break, summer break. Or any of the long breaks like uh Thanksgiving and uh, uh, spring break. But that waiver allows us to do it year round right now. Uh, waiver sixty-one, the response sixty-one, that's the one that allows us to do non-congregate feeding. That means that they don't have to be present for us to be able to, to claim that meal. That means that, you know, any adult can pick up the meal for the child, so that they can uh stay online and do their classwork. Uh, response number sixty-two allows us to, allows, I'm sorry, any parent or guardian pickup. That's the one that allows a parent to pick up. The sixty-one only for the non-congregate feeding. Um, number sixty-six, uh, response is the one that gives us a, allows to serve all three meals at the same time. We don't have to serve breakfast during breakfast time, lunch, lunchtime and supper during supper time. Cause normally has to be at least into our separation. That number sixty-six allows us to serve it at, all of them at the same time, which is what we do uh between the. Uh, seven and nine o'clock hour, you know, we give them all three meals uh at the same time. Uh, the number sixty-seven uh gives us a flexibility to not have to do offer, serve, which is a requirement. Under uh, you know, for junior highs and high schools. This means that every student gets all the components, uh, uh, you know, for, for all the meals. Uh, we give them the full complete meal, um, as opposed to during the regular school year. They can pick and choose, you know, what they wanna take, so that there is less uh waste. And lastly, in uh waiver sixty-eight, that one uh was in place so that we can actually offer supper. Normally, under seamless summer option, you can only do breakfast and lunch or breakfast and snack or lunch and snack. But with uh number sixty-eight, we're allowed to do breakfast, lunch and supper. So that allowed that um additional uh meals uh to be able to provide it to uh our, our students and the community.
Thank you Gilbert. So, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, board, just to put, you know, projecting numbers in perspective. We are projecting revenues of about seven and a half million dollars for the current year. And expenditures, we're projecting just under that at seven point two million. So, you know, we are, we are projecting a surplus this year in terms of, you know, funds in Fund uh one thirty. The Food Services Cafeteria Fund. So when we started the school year back in July one of twenty twenty, we started with an ending fund balance of one point six million. With a beginning fund balance of one point six million and we are projecting now to finish the year with just over two million dollars. So this fund is operating in good, you know, solid numbers and again, it's, you know. It is attributed to the effort that our cafeteria ladies, you know, are doing. They deserve all the credit in the world. Uh, Gilbert, you know, his uh county, his supervisor, they're just doing a phenomenal job, making sure that. They have what they need and if there is anything that they need in addition to what they have, all they have to do is ask. You know, we are there to, you know, support them, to provide them, whatever it is that they need so that they can feel safe. Uh, and again, we wanted to present this to you because we wanted, just to raise awareness as to what is it that food services programs do. But how we are operating here in the district and what precautions are we taking now during this pandemic? So that, you know, our ladies can feel secure, safe, you know. Doing what they love to do best, which is, you know, feeding our kiddos and right now, we're feeding eighteen and under. Are there any questions from the board regarding anything that we presented? Any comments, questions, concerns that we can respond to?
I don't have any.
No.
Nope. Alright, thank you board.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Hello board, at this time I'm promoting Ms. Redona into, into the meeting. So Ms. Redona, you should be able to uh unmute your mic, you should be able to speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, board members. Uh, I'm Sonia Redona and um. The new president for CSCA for Collexico. Um, I wanna uh name, give you the names of our new executive board. First Vice President, I have Elizabeth Esqueda. Second Vice President, Manuel Campos. Secretary Melissa Navarro. Treasurer Denise Gonzalez. And CPR is Priscilla Beltran. I don't know if you're aware, but I'm sure you are and one of our members have passed away this week. So right now, mem-, I'm getting calls from members that they don't feel safe at the schools. Okay, um, in August, you had a board meeting for the August thirteen, twenty twenty. Uh, maintenance and up, maintenance staff wrote a letter that was signed. They were asking the board for them to re, have five, they were working five days prior to the pandemic and now they put them to three days. Then they put them back now to five days. Okay, so they, in that letter, they never got an answer. They were asking to go back to three days. Or why did you do that change from that five days? And no answer was given and it was on the day of the board meeting. Uh, to begin with also, the district has not negotiated. Any MO, MOUs with Collexico, with Chapter three ninety-nine. Uh, the mem-, uh, the last memo was for March nineteen through April twenty. We have not. Uh, returned MOU back. And that's, I mean, we should have had it a long time ago, okay? So, and the Food Service Department is working now four days. So now, everybody else wants to be less days worked. Maintenance, MNO is asking for you, if you could honor them three days instead of five. And I said, I want everybody off schedule. I want everybody not to be in school. Because now we have more exposures, we have five schools. We have uh five food service. And I agree with them. I, I, we should be off until we get ready and expect everything else. Just let me give you an example. November fourth. My depart-, where I work, in the business department, I said, you're gonna be working half a day, one day, one night. It's okay, fine. So I worked all month. November ten. Our cust-, regular custodian was out for two weeks. November sixteen, there was a substitute custodian there and I said, oh yeah, I know how my people work here. I'm gonna go right to that custodian, cause I have a feeling. So I went straight to the custodian and I said. Did you clean this stuff here and start this frame? No, I don't have a machine, I don't know where it is. How can you not find it? Well, go and look for it, MNO, I said. Ah, it's something, you have to clean it here. Oh, you're a little scared, I thought you were scared. So, then I understood that, I understand that the machine was. Was half a scoop for the district office and then they would take it to MNO when you had to do over there. Why do we, don't we have enough money to buy a machine at every school? You know, Jose carries it back and forth. I mentioned to Mr. Thurman and I told him. This happened, I was there, what's going on? Well. Okay, 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 I'll look into it. November twenty-fourth, I get a letter and says. I'm supposed to quarantine myself and I'm not supposed to return back until December eighth, which is okay. So when I went back. I went back and, and I, and I had spoken to Mr. Thurman. And I told him the situation, Thurman, employees are walking in through that door. They have badges, badges, it's, there's no control. I'm tired of putting finger on people saying this and this, then, you know, people are not wearing masks. Uh, the day, we started working three days, I started working the full, whole full month. From a full month, it went to three days and then later went to two days and now one day out of the month. You know, our work, our, there's people, our work can be done at home? Do you really need the foot, the ground cement Fridays out there watering the grass? There's no safety for us, there's no safety, okay? And right now, when I see, there's a, I can't get my notes on that one. We have a, I went to the Anse yesterday. You know, I, I needed to go pick some stuff and they said, okay, just call me and I'll get them to you, I'll deliver them to you. Fine, when I get there, both gates are open. Wow, I said, you must be having something here. The campus doctor was just sitting in front there. And I said hi to her, she went to go get the books. When I came back, she dropped, dropped them off in my car, social distance. But there was a procedure in place that you had to make sure you knew who was coming in and check in, right? That was in January seventh. All schools are doing whatever they wanna do and it's not right. Because to begin with, that MOU that you put, that uh food service are working four hours. There's no MOU. I told Mr. Thurman when I saw him, you need an MOU in place, you cannot do this. He's not a doctor, he's, he, he needs to communicate with me. This is what I'm gonna do, what do you think? Because he's not, he's not doing that, he's overpassing me. Just for example, the plan, prevention plan, school site. He said, you know what, I said this, we're gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the principals and the site reps go. I said, who said so? Who's the site rep? I don't have site reps. As a matter of fact, if there's gonna be visits, it's gonna be me. And, and Pat Burstow, but then I didn't, later, the next day, I told him it's gonna be another person, okay? Now Mike, then I thought about it because he said the teachers, the principals are gonna communicate, communicate with me, email. I'm willing to help, but you know what? I'm not gonna set up the dates with these principals. I have other things to do, I have my regular job. He needs to set up the dates and I'm, and my understanding is that. CTA is not gonna do the walk and tell you guys everything you have done a month before when we start school. I'm asking, please, we need, it's getting worse, we don't need to work all those days. The work can be done home. Nobody's allowed at school, but there's a few schools that are allowing people inside. I told them, Mr. Thurman, you, I, I, I've seen these people come in, they have talked to me. From the, the buildings, the buildings from the back were moved to, back to FRCA building over there? Well, guess what? They're coming in to deliver the time cards. Hand deliver, they have a key to get in, I mean, not a key, the badge to get in. One of them came to me and asked, how did you get in? Well, I have a badge. Oh, okay, no problem. She handed me the time card. Now, there wasn't, prior to January seventh, there was no control of who was coming in and out. Principals and all administration busy with, with um meetings. But you know what? I said, I asked if we can reduce the days of the people that are working. And also, I asked Mr. Thurman, he needs to meet with me before anything is changed. Like the food service was changed and I said, where's the MOU? Oh, I'm, that's okay, that's okay, that's fine. But we need to protect our members and they're not, they don't feel the protection from you guys, they don't. And if you're gonna go to school sites, why don't you start at the sites we're, we're working right now? For example, visit the IT. Nothing has been done in that office. Visit the payroll, nothing has been done there. Visit the curriculum, nothing has been done there. And they're working. And you want me to go visit schools? No, you visit first and see if you got the classified cover. So I'm asking again, please, please. It's not getting any better here in Calixico. We're gonna, we're having more. We have about 15 people probably out. Five schools that had more than three people. That's telling me something, they're not following guidelines. Because nobody's there to see them, principals are busy, everything. Please, I'm asking. If we can start reducing those days as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redona.
Thank you.
Thank you. H2 Maintenance.
Now we have on line Ms. Esther Martinez, Ms. Fabiola Calderón, and Ms. Dario Espinoza.
So, H2, Maintenance and Operations update. Overtime, HVAC and contracts. And, Cesar, who's gonna present?
That'll be me, myself, and I.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Cesar Vega again, Assistant Super Business. So, you know, for this particular presentation, given the amount of, you know, items and information that they're in, I, I have invited Fabiola Calderón to, you know, my county supervisor to join me. I invited Esther Martinez, our Personal Commission Director. I invited Dario Espinoza to also participate. And Maribel Paz, my business manager. And here with me is our Maintenance and Operations Supervisor, Chris de la Rosa. We're all gonna take part of this presentation. We're all gonna, you know, give you as many details and information as we can. So, I'd like to start this presentation by, by, is it on? Let me try again. Oh, there it is. Okay, so, there. So, I'd like to start this presentation just by making a reference. I want to make reference of Education Code 170. Can you make it smaller? 17070.75. Why is that important? It is important because that's the area in the ed code that tells us that we, as a district, we are required every single year, from every budget, to allocate 3% of our expected expenditures aside for the upkeep and maintenance of our facilities. So, any building that we have, that is there, existing there, that money has to be designated, you know, to maintain it. We have to maintain it. It's part of our obligation under the Local Control Funding Formula. Okay? So it is very important, because I'm gonna be referencing back and forth that ed code throughout this presentation. All right. So, I want to start first, wait a minute, skip a slide, hold on. What's going on with this thing? I want to go back. All right, so, all right, sorry Board. So, okay, so, the first item that I want to talk about is related to the Articare contract. So, I handed over to you a copy of the actual contract that was board approved back in June of 2019? And also the minutes that took place that day. So, it's good, you know, for your reference. However, for the, for this particular presentation, as you can see, it was action item K10 back then. And back then, we provided, you know, an RFP, an extension of the RFP that was executed. And the language said as follows, "Agreement renewed between Calixico USD and Articare Conditioning Heating Inc. For HVAC emergency, emergency preventive maintenance and repair services." Three different things. Emergency repairs, preventive maintenance, and regular repairs. That's very important to understand, because those are totally three different things under this old agreement that expired. So, when we brought this item forward to you for approval, we told you back then that you are approving a contract worth $107,660 for the preventive maintenance for fiscal year 2019-2020. Okay? So, the 107 amount was only conducive to the preventive maintenance of HVAC units for fiscal year 2019-2020. We also stated back then, and it's in the minutes, that we did not know what would be the impact on emergency repairs or on-call services at that time, because it is impossible to quantify that information. We don't know when emergencies are gonna occur. We don't know when HVAC units are gonna break. It's impossible. We cannot put a number there, because we simply don't have that ability. So, I just want to make sure that the board understands that the 107660 amount was not inclusive of everything. All right? The 107660 amount, it was only conducive to the preventive maintenance of that RFP. Okay? All right. So, I would like to break it down, you know, in sections, so that the board can see exactly how the money was spent during that contract year, 2019, July 1, 2019, through June 30 of 2020. Remember, keep in mind, the preventive service amount was $107,000. So, that year, the last fiscal year, we had two open POs for those services, for the preventive maintenance. We encumbered on the first PO an amount of $75,000, and the second PO of $15,000, for a total of $90,000 for the preventive maintenance of HVAC units. Throughout the year, between July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of 2020, we only spent $75,415 on the preventive service component of the RFP. All right? So that is well below the 107 mark. When it came to HVAC units replaced, units that we replaced, we encumbered $439,900,000, and that's exactly the same amount that we spent on replacement units on that fiscal year. Under, under units repaired, there was a PO that we had, or POs that we had, because, you know, regular repairs happen throughout the year. And again, we can't quantify when they're gonna happen, when we are gonna need repairs. But in total, we spent about $62,000. So, what is that in total for the, for the fiscal year, subject to this agreement? We spent $578,000, you know, in totality for that fiscal year. But, the important thing is that we, as a district, we stay within the parameters of the preventive maintenance board-approved amount of 107, $107,000. So, it's true, the business department, my fault. I let the contract expire or did not renew it on time. And we talked about that, and, you know, my apologies for that. So, nevertheless, from July 1, 2020, through, when the time, when the board asked us to not continue to use Articare as a company, until we went out and bid again, or, you know, solicited more RFPs, between July 1 of 2020 and November 18 of 2020, during that amount, during that time, we spent a total of $20,000 on preventive maintenance services. When you add $20,000 to the 75 that we spent, you know, 2019-2020, we are still well below the 107 threshold that the board had approved when the contract was executed and approved by you, the board. When it comes to units replaced, during between July 1, 2020, through November 18, 2020, we replaced a total of 100, we spent a total of $196,000. When it comes to units repaired, we spent about $79,919 in total. So what is that total amount between those July 1, 2020, and November 18 of the same year? We spent a total of $297,439.74. So, again, the board approved a preventive maintenance agreement worth $107,000. Between July 1 of 2019 through November 18 of 2020, those 16, 17 months, we spent $96,000 on the preventive maintenance side, which is well below the 107. On the HVAC units replacement, we spent in total, during that 16, 17 month period, $636,600,000 in total. On the repairs, we spent $142,691. That will give us a total of $875,000 for that 16 month period. And we will explain why those emergency repairs and why those units replaced. So, like I said, I have my supervisors, and every single one of my supervisors that are here via Zoom or here, present, will be participating in this presentation, because I want them to also share with you, you know, how we, in the business department, Maintenance and Operations Department, how we operate and how we do things, and sometimes how we make decisions, you know, because that's, you know, completely impacts our ability to keep our schools functioning and going forward. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Chris de la Rosa to talk about what is our HVAC inventory right now? How old, how old are those units, and how many units do we have? So Chris, take it over. So in total, we have 819 HVAC units in the district. That is our total inventory. So, ready Chris?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have 819 total HVAC units, as Mr. Vega said. And we've been replacing, and we have actually 301 that, that we can't, we don't have yet on our active inventory list, as far as, because they have to be replaced. So when they replace them, you gotta, you gotta change them to need and, and add. And the HVAC techs and the employee and the inventory control, they're working together to, to solidify that number of things.
So in essence, what we have right now, Board, we have a list that is not complete yet. We're working towards completing. We have 301 units that we have not been able to identify, because we have been short-staffed right now. So, the column that you see in, in yellow, where it says "Date not available", those are the units that we still have to do work and, you know, inventory and recognize out there in terms of how old it is. But in total, we have 819 units, and we have units that date back to 2002. We have three units at the ANSA that are 2000, you know, year make and model, three units from 2002, and one at the old FRC.
Yeah, we have, if you could see the years, and I can speak for 2015 this way. Before that, we weren't, I wasn't employed as a supervisor. So you'll see numbers at the bottom in black, you'll see on 2015, 105 units employed. That year, we had, we had a grant, ERP grant.
ERP stands for Emergency Repair Program.
And then the next year, you saw 93, okay? That was the year from, from 2015 to 2017, when we had our Prop 39 grant. And we were able to address a lot of units that we, they were identified by, by climate tech. We came into contract, we had approved it, and, and, and we're able to change a very high number of units. Okay? 2017, we kept going, and we were addressing units recommended by our techs and units that failed and, and were, were not cost effective to, to repair. Chris, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Now, you mentioned that units that are not, that it costs more to repair than actually a new unit, right? You encounter those quite a bit, right?
Quite a bit.
Because they are, these are old units. Now, do, do our own employees come and go and purchase that, the new AC unit and put it themselves, or do you guys have to call somebody else?
No, we, we call a contractor.
Okay.
Okay? Although it's written in the drop description of our, of our own ATRACs to replace units.
And install them? It, I believe it's even written, "To fabricate ductwork." That's stuff they used to do years ago. They've long since not performed those type of duties, pretty low. So, when, when we started employing a contractor to come and help us, we would get different ones, okay? Different contractors. It wasn't up until we got a specific contractor to help us with emergency services, where we started seeing one contractor, right? Because we used to buy from VIX, and we used to buy from Arctic, and we used to buy from, from R&amp;K, if we could. So, the process was, get three quotes, what have you, and that's when I, when I barely, when we barely started here in 2014. Okay, that process was longer, longer than the, than the expectations that, that began around 2016. 2015, 2016, the expectations from the district were to hurry up and change it. Everything was considered emergency. So if an air conditioner went down, and the recommendation was to replace it, it had to be done right away. So, calls were made, and, and we were, we were able to, to change a lot of units very quickly. Okay? So that's been kind of the practice. When a unit's identified as not cost, cost-effective to, to repair or to keep repairing, because the tech will tell you, "You know, I can repair it, but it's gonna break down. I guarantee you it's gonna break down, sure enough, they break down." And then when you start dealing with these older units that have R22 freon, as opposed to the new, the 410A, those units were, the R22 is more expensive, because it's a, it's a refrigerant that's being phased out, and we'll get to that in a little bit.
Yeah, we'll get to that in a minute. Let, let's follow that, that slide so that we can.
So, those type of things generate the, they trigger the decision to, to replace. I get emails every year. We ask our techs to recommend, from the sites they're assigned to, to recommend us classrooms that they recommend that the unit be, be changed. And we try to support our techs by trying to address that list as the year goes. Sometimes the machines last, they'll last, and they'll, they'll go a good way. But once, once they die, the tech will quickly point out, "Hey, this is, this one was on my list. Can we finally change it now?" So then we'll, we'll make the decision to change it then.
Do you, do you have the equipment? For example, your technicians are certified technicians, so they can do all the HVAC stuff, right? But what about to bring a new unit and take the old, do you have the equipment to do it yourself?
We, we have the equipment to do it ourselves, yes.
Okay, you do? Okay.
Yeah, and we'll get back to the reason why we don't.
Okay.
Okay?
So Chris, can you talk about EPA?
Yeah, okay, so EPA, what I was, what I was getting at when I mentioned R22 refrigerant. R22 is a refrigerant, very strong refrigerant, that the EPA back in 2013 started to, to. That the EPA back in, uh, two thousand and thirteen started to, to phase out. They went into a phase-out plan. That, meaning that in the United States, they were no longer going to manufacture R twenty-two nor, nor were they gonna, um, continue importing it. So, um, little by little, can you go to the slide that has the, the phase-out plan? There it is. Um, so if you could see, two thousand and thirteen, they were only, they were only gonna make sixty-three million pounds. Worth of R twenty-two for sale. And every year, the amount goes down. In two thousand and twenty, January first of two thousand and twenty. Was the day that they, they ceased to, to manufacture it or import it. So, um, that makes this a, a hot commodity, if you will. Um, uh, refrigerant that, that there's gonna be less and less of. So the recommendation of the EPA is to start phasing out your machines as well, okay? So, so when we have problems with our machines, most of them are art, old, are older R twenty-two machines. So it's almost two birds with one stone. We're getting rid of an older machine plus we're, we're phasing out of, of the need for R twenty-two refrigerant. Okay, um, there's still gonna be R twenty-two available, but it's gonna be reclaimed, um, freon. And it's gonna be an upcharge, um, that, that doesn't make it a physically responsible to.
Very expensive.
Recycle, right?
Yeah, recycle. We don't recommend recycle for our machines.
Okay, um, a lot of you can retrofit your machines, but, um, there's a lot of cons against retrofitting your machines as well. So it's better just to, to buy a new machine. Now, the, unfortunately with the new machines, the life expectancy, although they, they'll tell you fifteen years. The life expectancy in a commercial, commercial setting, it's closer to ten years, especially if you don't. If you don't have, uh, the best preventive maintenance plan or, 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 or the best maintenance practices. Okay, so they're closer to ten years. Now, now, these are not the same kind of machines. These are built, built cheaper, the metal's thinner. Uh, you know, you can tell the older machines are, are more heavy-duty, commercial machines as opposed to, to the machines they have now. So, um, we've been fortunate that we've had a few grants, like, uh, I'll give you a campus Aurora High School. There, those are all brand new. When we, when we set Aurora over there, um, we had enough money in the ERP to, um. To address all of those units. Regardless if they were working or not, they swapped them all out, okay? So we hardly get calls to go to Aurora and, and address, uh, issues. So over there, it's, it's basi-, it's pretty, pretty, it's pretty clear, uh, preventive maintenance plan that's happening over there. As opposed to other sites like the high school. High school has well over a hundred units. So, um, the, and there're mo- most of them are older. That's why you see so many going to the high school. If you, if you're looking at the purchases, you'll see a lot of them going to the high school. You'll see a lot of them going to Camarena now. Camarena that it takes where the, where the machines are starting to, to fail on them. They, 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 they're what, thirteen years old, fourteen years old now? And then, um, you're gonna start seeing Caesar Chavez come, come into your list of units that are, are gonna start being phased out.
Set.
Because of age.
Chris, I'd, sorry to interrupt you real quick. Uh, Sessa, you brought up educational code, right? What's the, what's the educational code for the public contract code? What is that?
Oh, gosh, uh.
It's a twenty-one, one, one.
Yeah, it's not twenties, um.
Require school district governing boards to competitively bid and award any contracts involving an expenditure of more than fifty thousand dollars. Adjusted for inflation to the lowest responsible bidder. You wanna throw out educational codes, that, that's the reason, okay? Um, and that, the reason why I bring it up i- is not to, um, try to micromanage anything and stuff like that. It's just to go ahead and do things in the best possible way. Trying to get the best bids for, to come in, um, and save the school district money at the same time, okay? That, that, that's the reason why, why I bring it up and stuff like that. I'm not bringing it up to try to pinpoint anybody, try to pinpoint anything at all. But, um, I mean, there's, there's other parts of the educational code also as well that covers a bunch of the stuff that covers everything as far as that goes, okay?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Overado, um, in, in regards to, you, you're saying that, are you saying that, um. Anything over fifty thousand dollars, we should go out to bid for? Okay, um, I mean, I, I don't want to push you, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, the education code they, they, that you put out.
Yeah, if you go, if you go back a couple of slides, uh, Sessa, to, uh, the years that we spent.
Right there.
Couple more. HVAC units replaced, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred, um, the other one forward from that? A hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, they're gonna be well over, well, well over fifty thousand. And, um, and, and it's how the, it's how the, the, the contracts are written. Um, they went out to bid, but unfortunately, when it was written, it, it was left wide open and it, in the back end of it. The, the most important, the most expensive item that they, when you're contracting out these services, it's not preventative maintenance. It's, it's gonna be those emergency, emergency, um, services and the on-call services.
Correct.
So that's where you're gonna get, you're gonna get charged, um, for the, for the labor.
No, no, I, I, I totally, I totally get that and that's why.
The freon and then everything else associated with it, but that's how the contract's written. Me personally, I don't agree with, with a, a no nomination, no number. Um, of, or limit on that back end of, of, or the other two components of, of, of those type of contracts.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's unethical. But the thing about that, I'm bringing it up is, for a simple fact, you pointed out something real great. Uh, you said that you go and tell your HVAC, uh, people to go ahead and point out what units they wanna get replaced. So you guys already know in advance how many units are gonna get replaced. Since you guys bring something up and say, you know what, hey guys? This is gonna get replaced, let's go ahead and go out for a bid.
Unfortunately, we're, it's more reactionary than, 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 uh, being proactive. Because we, we don't budget money and go out and, and, and just replace them. They're working, they're working, and we keep them working. And, and until they completely fail on the E S two, we can't, and everyone, I don't know, talk like that. And they say, hey, you know, that's it. But, but we don't say, hey, these units we're gonna, we're gonna replace. We don't have a replacement plan. If we had a comprehensive maintenance plan or a deferred maintenance plan that's active. I know that you hired Dixon and his company to provide you with a, a deferred maintenance plan. And, and things like that will, are, are addressed in there, where, where you have a five-year projection. And then you, you can, you can address, um, so many units per year, you budget for it.
But, but if.
Same thing in a comprehensive maintenance plan.
Can, can I make a comment here?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, um, good evening, everyone, and, um, I think your eight hundred and nineteen ACs is wrong to start with. I think it's, it's in like in a thousand, but I, I mean, that's, I guess with climate tech. We found out how many units we needed to replace. So climate tech actually did all the homework for us. When we installed those thermostats to regulate the time, because they installed a thermostat in every AC in this district. So they gave us the information. And you know, I'm not here to tell you how to do your job. I'm here that this company, we allowed this company to take us for a thousand, I mean, a, a million point five. Which, it's unacceptable. And let me give you some, some background on how all this started. I started in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen or sixteen. Our staff, we were down because some of them were on workman's comp and they couldn't keep up with the maintenance for these air conditioners. And we were about to start the school, uh, year in, uh, August. So I brought it to this board and we got a, a company to come in to help them out. To augment their maintenance, preventive maintenance, not to replace air, air conditioners. We knew how many we had to replace, and I think that's where we missed the whole. Um, idea here, that if we knew we had three hundred, then we should have gone out to bid. Or made a plan like Mr. De La Rosa is saying, that let's project five years. We'll, and that's my, um, Ms. Randall had that, that this year we're gonna replace twenty. Next year, another twenty and so forth until we were done with all the air conditioners. I've been asking for a preventive maintenance plan since two thousand and fourteen, and to this day, we don't have any. We don't have one. So, all these air conditioners that we, three hundred and one that we say that aren't even on our printer or on our computers, they're lost. Until we put them in our computer system, we'll know when they have to be maintenance and so forth. There is programs to help you do this. I've asked somebody to go out to the prison to see. Every week, a printer comes out. And they tells them what units to service. And we have more, or this prison has more ACs than this district. So there are existing programs that you can actually get, and they've been trying to get one since Jeremy tried and everybody is, to get one. Nothing has happened. But the issue here is how we allow this company. To make a million point five with taxpayers' money, when we should have gone out to bid. That's the issue. I don't wanna know, I mean, the freon, I know that, that R twenty-two is obsolete. It's against the law in some cases, you know, they have so many provisions that you can't use, and so I know that too. I, I am sure some of the board members know that. We've all lived in the valley, we know the, the life expectancy, uh, expectancy of an air conditioner. If you get six years, you're already, you know, earn your money, you know what I mean? So don't tell us what we don't already know. The problem here is how did we allow this company to make a million point five? That's the issue here. So don't, don't tell us here that, you know, the air conditioners were bad. We knew they were bad, but we should have gone out to bid. Or gone to a company and say, how much is it gonna cost us? Let's do a five-year plan and every year designate. But don't allow this company to go wild.
You know, and I wanna interrupt you, but your, the five-year plan, what I mentioned, the comprehensive maintenance plan. Deferred maintenance plan, those are things we're just, just la- now learning. Um, I, I mean, I, um, whether Ms. Randall knew those type of plans or not. Or she, she went to those type of trains, I don't know. But I know that that's stuff I'm learning now with, with the, with the course I'm taking, that Dixon recommended. So, those things are, are, are on the, on the lookout, you know, or they're looking up. Where, where you can start bringing, um, things that we, nor, different practices that we, we normally didn't have, different plans. But we were operating or are, are, or yeah, up until November, we're operating on. Getting ready for school, especially this year. Um, the unit was recommended to go down, uh, recommended to be replaced. Um, we replaced it, getting ready for school. Um, we know very well that for this board, it's unacceptable to have units down at, at, at any of the schools. And, and we operate knowing that. Um, whether it's this one company or, or not, that's, that's how we, how the contract was interpreted. And it was interpreted way back when Mr. Breeze was here and when Ms. Randall was here and, and it's the same. Um, on tonight, you have a contract, uh, up, up for, um, for approval, and it's, it's the same type. It's open-ended at the back, but, so there needs to be some kind of, of a. Direction there.
Well, I, I can tell you this much, if the direction is to start changing, uh, new ACs, then you need to bring it up to us. I mean, make, make a list, a comprehensive list, and let us know, okay, this year we wanna take care of this, like we did with your trucks. We, we got you, you guys, you needed, you, you brought your staff here, you wanted trucks, we got you trucks. Every year we had, but I know what I'm saying, because we can't go in and change three hundred air conditioners. But we can make a plan and say, this year, we're gonna change twenty, the ones that are, uh, are twenty-two. And then next year, we'll, hopefully they won't break down and get some more air conditioners. That's how it works. And the rest, the new ones, every year, it's gonna pop out. If you have the program, it'll pop out and say, you need to wash the condenser. You need to do this, you need to do that, and they'll be good for another six, seven years. Uh, get rid of the pigeon droppings, I mean, I, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, we can't allow a company to just start changing air conditioners to a point that it's a million point five. That's the problem. That's taxpayers' money, your money and my money.
Especially when you start off with the educational code seventeen zero seven five like you did, Sessar. I mean, it's California competitive bidding, there's laws. You look into them and you could see exactly what it is. I understand that, that contract, the way it was written and stuff like that, but you know what, when something. Especially if it's over fifty thousand dollars, there's guidelines, there's laws that we have to abide by. I understand there's emergencies, I, I totally get that. There is emergencies. There, there's times where during the summer, hey, we can't, we have to replace it. We has to be replaced, but we know when there's ten, fifteen, twenty that need to be replaced, come on. That, that, that's unacceptable. The way I see it, it's unacceptable.
Okay, duly noted. So, so if I understand correctly, what the board wants me to do is put together a plan, replacement plan. Of units that are old, whether they need to be replaced or not, or, or, I, I, I need to be clear on that. How do you want me to proceed moving forward?
The recommended one.
If you go to climate tech, that report will tell you everything. Get a plan because you need to include the old and the new. So that way we know what we have and what we're looking at to replace and so forth. I have no problem replacing air conditioners, but I'm not gonna, um, spend money, I mean, on three hundred ACs. You, you should know we're, we're in a deficit. We can't, we can't afford that. We can't take that hit in one lump sum.
Well, remember that, we have to spend three percent of our total expenditures on the upkeep of our facilities. And the money that we have used to repair those facilities have come out of the routine restricted maintenance account where the money is.
Mr. Vic. You're the money guy, I, and my respect to you, on my, as a board member. And, and, and I wanna be able to tell my constituents what's going on, I want a plan. So when I, they ask me about it, I can tell them, well, you know what, no, this is what the plan is, and this is what the plan will be in the next five years. And, and of, of course, don't allow that company that we hopefully are gonna hire today to start changing air conditioners. And, and just go up, I mean, in the millions of dollars.
And, and also, and also on.
List of that one million, five thirty-eight, huh, what, what the time period that was in period? Quarter, I, you have a list, uh, of one million, five thirty-eight, what's the time period? It was three years.
Three years?
Three years.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Based on maintenance, uh, replacement, uh, consultation, removal of pigeon, uh, droppings. I mean, you can go on, I mean, they charged us, what was it, sixteen, no, a thousand, six hundred for pigeon droppings to remove from, I don't know.
And, and like Mr. De La Rosa stated, it, it was, it was a contract that was, that was left open. I, I wanna see that contract where it states that was left open, where they could go ahead and replace ACs on the contract. Because that's something that I, I haven't seen, but if it was a contract that was left open in this next one. We gotta make sure that, you know, it's not allowed again because it was a little bit over one point five and that included everything, almost went closer to one point six. Um, if the contract states over a hundred thousand, it was a hundred and seven thousand, it's a hundred and seven thousand, that's what it is. If, if anything goes over a hundred and seven thousand, then it should come back. As Mrs. Mattress should come back and say, hey, you know what, we're hitting the threshold, let's go ahead and look into it, see what's going on.
Excuse me? What's the average cost?
Five, a five-ten unit, uh, the average is about three thousand.
So, so is, is that, is that a different unit for, for example, in our houses, we have five-ten units, right? But what they sell for the schools, are they different?
Yeah, well, they're, they're commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah, package units, then, like, kinda like your house, you can, your house, your house, that's big units.
But are those so, because this is a, because it's a commercial unit, is it more expensive?
No, um, not really.
No.
I mean, they're, they're, they're very, they're very close to each other.
Okay.
Just that, um, commercial should, commercially, commercial units are run with, um, belts. Or have you, um, a lot of the, the units we buy too, could be considered residential, so they're, they're, each kind of moments to say. The only difference is that when, on portable, you got wall packs. And those are the ones you see up, up on the wall, those are much more expensive. And, and we opt to go to package units.
That sit off behind on the platform. And, and that's, um, because the techs, um, it's easier for them to work on, number one. Number two, they don't have that, that, uh, that high pressure, 'cause with, with multiple children, they're back-to-back. And if they don't have a belt to push, to correct the arrow, um, they get a lot of pressure, and then the, it shortens the life on the compressor, the compressors. Okay? So, the package units shoots everything else, you don't have to worry about, about anything else, but, uh, being able to work on them easier is, is, is the key, and, and when I started in my position, and driven as a director, um, architect, or, or we press package units. So, um, most of you buy those, then you have the lift tops.
Chris, let, let me ask you, let me ask you one question, then, then we need to make a motion to extend the meeting. So when Artec Air, when Artec Air found a unit that needed to be replaced, did they go to you, uh, and tell you, hey, we need this replaced?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll call, say, you know, this unit, room five, for example, Camarena, this unit, it needs to be replaced. You know? If available, I'll send the tech over to, to give me a, give me a second opinion.
Second opinion.
You will. Uh, but, but a lot of times, it's, some, you have to trust that, that they're, um, not taking you for a ride.
Yeah. And those, those old unit, those old units, 'cause you know how sometimes if it's old equipment and stuff like that, they have to bring it up, and we have to do, uh, what is it? Yeah.
They take it off, they take it off our hands.
They take it on, they dispose it. That, that's the practice, at least. Um, if you will, they, they, uh, take the burden off of us and having to, uh-
Okay, so we got-
You gotta, you gotta deal with the, you gotta deal with the compressor and your-
Mr. Alvarado, how many, how many HVAC staff do we have?
Four.
I'm gonna cover that right now, Mr. Other one. Four? So, if I may, uh, yes, sir.
Okay, yes. Uh, there's a motion by Mr. Alvarado, and there's a second by Mr. Calderon to extend the meeting to ten thirty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five-zero, no abstentions.
So, s- so this is why, you know, we call Artec Air, or used to call Artec Air, you know, quite a bit, and I'm gonna explain why. So we have four HVAC technicians, four of them. One of them is HVAC slash bus driver, Chris, is that correct? So, over the last, I, I wanna, I just wanna paint a picture of three years, over the last three fiscal years, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and, you know, current year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I just wanna put in perspective the amount of, you know, and, you know, granted, every employee has entitled leaves, you know, whether it's sick leave, whether it's vacation, you know, every single employee is entitled to their leave. And, you know, we also have, you know, a lot of workers' comp places that, you know, contribute to, you know, some of our HVAC, uh, technicians to be out for X number of days. So, what I wanna do, I wanna show you that, you know, from the four HVAC technicians that we have, in fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, total absence days, three hundred and twenty days. That's three hundred and twenty days total, between all four, that they were absent. The following year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, all combined, two hundred and twenty-five days. Current year, and the year's not done, but through November, a hundred and fifty-three days, that they have for one reason or another. And again, these are employees that are entitled to their leave. The issue is that whenever we have HVAC technicians out, we don't have substitutes that can just, you know, come in for a day or two and replace, you know, or, or cover that absence. So, when you look at the grand totality of the number of days that they have missed over the last three years, almost seven hundred days, workdays, that this, uh, four HVAC technicians have missed. And that's not counting the fact that one of them is a bus driver, and whenever, as you know, we're short on drivers, you know, this individual drives most of the time. So that's, you know, that's just to put it in context, so that you know that, you know, we are short-staffed, shorthanded, when it comes to our own people, our own staff, working on our HVAC units. Whether it's a hundred and nineteen or a thousand, wh- whichever number that is, we are short-staffed.
Can I add a little bit?
Go ahead.
Um, so, the bus driver, HVAC tech slash, uh, well, he's a HVAC tech who ha- who holds a bus driving certificate. He was a bus driver, became, before he became an HVAC, and kept the certificate. That allows transportation to utilize him when they're, when they're in a pinch. Unfortunately, they've had their own, their own, um, trouble, staffing, the staffing problems, that they're always in the pinch, especially with the demands when school's in full session. So he does drive a lot, especially in the afternoon. So if he's working on a machine, he has to pull off that machine and go and transport the kids. Then he'll come back and, and try to finish the machine, 'cause we want it, we want it done before the next day. That, that's one of the things that generates overtime when, um, for, for HVAC. The o- the other, the other three techs is where most of the absences are, unfortunately, for various reasons. And the other three techs, all are unwilling to work any, any type of extra hours or overtime, so-
You said they, they're not?
They're not willing. I have them give me an email indicating so. So if they're not willing to, to work overtime, they, um, I ask them to send me an email saying so. So, between the four, I really have the one guy who's a hard charger, and, um, last year, he had a bad year, but, uh, he's a hard charger, and, um, he, he tries to take care of the needs. Like, today, he came to address your, your, your HVAC.
Yeah, we see him all over the district.
Yeah, he, he's all over the district. So, um, that's a huge problem for us. Um, that, the fact that we, we required them a few years ago to, um, begin changing air filters themselves before, when the, when the bus routes would allow it, there, there was a position called a maintenance slash bus driver. And those maintenance slash bus drivers would change air filters in between their bus routes. But the dynamics of the bus routes have changed, and the, and the need has changed, that those maintenance slash bus drivers don't have any time for any kind of maintenance work. So, maintenance, in essence, lost, uh, point five FTE for full-time equivalent employees, um, that used to take care of our filter, filters. So now, the, the regular techs change the air filters, and we went through a whole, a whole challenge from the techs, 'cause we, we, we laid that, that work on them when Jeremy was here. Okay, so, so that's a dynamic also, that, that didn't sit well with techs, and has kind of lowered morale, in my opinion, for them, and, and unwillingness to work extra hours and overtime, uh, developed.
Hey, Chris, and, and you pointed out something earlier too, that I, that I caught on. You said that, that our H, our HVAC techs don't do duck work, that's what you said? It, it's in the job description, but they don't do it?
They don't do it anymore. So, so they told me, now, I have to go by what they told me. Years ago, they started contracting it out to, uh, a company called Lunas, and, um, and I know a lot of companies, HVAC companies, contract that person, and they started contracting out to that person. Um, and, um, they stopped doing that work, you know? You can ask them to do little things, and they can do little things, but full-blown duck work, that, that they don't do. Okay, you can ask them to, we've asked them to do mini splits, and install mini splits and stuff, and, and, but that's pretty much the, the, the most they could do, because of the time, they, um, I could give them units, but it's gonna take two, three, four guys to change out a unit, it's gonna take them a while.
And, and you know what, Chris, I don't know- One, one, one more, one more quick question. Um, are we the only school district that does that, allows our HVAC, uh, technicians to do that, or is it all the, all the other?
In all honesty, I don't know what El Central does, I don't know what Bradley does, or any of those school districts.
Okay.
I mean, we all know it's cost-effective to have someone ban, ban, um, ducks and so forth, and a lot of these contractors locally, that's what they do, they measure, and they contract A and R. A and R builds them for them, they all install them, when they're installing the new units. So, my question is, you have four HVACs, are they assigned by schools? Or do they get, um, like, say, uh, like calls, or how does this, how, how do you work with these guys?
They're, they're assigned, uh, a school site, and when the work order comes to them for, from that school site, I assign it to that person. If they're not here-
Just for that site, or for other sites?
Well, um, I have four techs, and I have twelve sites, so the, the, so, some have three, some have four, depending on the size. The guy from the high school has the high school district office, you know, um, 'cause it's, it's much bigger. So, we try to keep the, the amount of units even, so depending, if some can have two, if some can have three, or some can have four sites.
And, and the reason I'm asking is that, if I'm a HVAC, um, staff, and I'm assigned to Aurora, Aurora, should I gotta meet? 'Cause they all, they have new air conditioners.
You gotta meet on that site, but I will, I will adjust to make, to make sure that, that that's considered, that, that you're not gonna get too many calls from there.
And my final question is, what did our staff do before two thousand fifteen? Because they didn't have Artec Air. I mean, we brought it-
I'll, I'll, I'll share a little bit with you. Um, being a guy who used to be at a school site, you waited your turn. When, when you had an air conditioner down, you submitted a work order, and you waited your turn. There was no skipping, and there was no, uh, jumping, um, get over there right now. Uh, contractors weren't, weren't sent, were sent over, you waited your turn. Um, the school made adjustments, you moved classrooms to the cafeteria, you did different things. But all of that changed when the expecta- uh, quite honestly, when the expectations changed. Uh, the other factor was room. Classroom started getting bigger and bigger, uh, school, school populations, some point, and there were empty classrooms, were being used for other things, so you didn't have that flexibility anymore. But I, I could tell you how we used to operate, we waited. And then we had our tech, and he would come, and you'd call him and say, hey, where, where you at? Oh, I got, I got two more, and then I'll beat you, I'll get to you. And sometimes, they make a repair, sometimes it could take all day, sometimes it could take an hour. Um, but, but that, that was the reality in two thousand fourteen, or two thousand thirteen, fourteen, thirteen, twelve, all the way to ninety-four, when, when I, when I was hired.
So, um, from what I gather, not much, the, uh, HVAC, uh, HVAC, uh, people that are assigned to you, they have their contracts, uh, and they are protected by the union, and, uh, they, they, they have the right to their leaves, and we're not gonna do anything about that. Me belonging, belonging to a union, I, uh, I am all for unions and what they provide for us. So I under, I understand, and talking about that, Carlos, can you check the contract on this HVAC regarding, uh, what is it, the, that, uh, that issue? That they don't do anymore, right? Mr. De La Rosa, Mr. De La Rosa, that issue, that they don't do something anymore, what is it that they don't do? Huh?
They don't do, uh, duck work or, or conditioning installations. Unless they have a, a lot, a lot of time to do it.
Okay.
But it seems like, like, they're always running behind. Right now, we're, we're in a unique position, because there's no students in, in schools. Um, although there are some staff, but, but we're in a unique position for that. We, right now, we can't make, make any moves or address any, any, any type of scenarios, like, like you, you pointed out earlier, because we're kind of at a standstill, waiting to see what, what happens here with, with, with HVAC. But, um, not knowing also, not knowing also when exactly we're gonna come back, is, is, is a little unsettling, because if, if you jump into a plan, um, are we gonna, are we gonna, is the county gonna pivot? And, and then we're gonna be, we're gonna be stuck with, um, whatever project, some kind, I don't know.
I think we're gonna leave it up to-
It's just a little unsettled.
I will leave it up to you and Mr. Vega to create a plan, and a plan that, a living plan that it can change from week to week, or month to month, depending on, on what, uh, the, what we are told to do, what we are allowed to do by the state.
And, and, and I'm all for, I mean, uh, well, my, my philosophy is, I'm all for, for budgeting, and, and then when we get to a threshold, coming back to the board and saying, hey, we're at the threshold, this is what's been done with it. And, and then get more money approved if, if, if necessary. To avoid all these, to avoid all these problems, to avoid any-
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not blaming you, uh, Mr. De La Rosa, because you're doing your job, and your job is to fix what is broken. I mean, what, and that's your job. You go and, and you cannot just make, uh, a compressor in your shop, you need to go and buy it. We understand that. But one of the questions that I, one of the questions that I had in, on this, on this item was, uh, who determined who, uh, what to fix? So that, that answer, that was, that has been answered. But also, we wanted to know, who gave the go-ahead to go with these expenditures? So I'm assuming that that, you did, and you did not, did you ever communicate with Carlos? And that Carlos communicated with the board president at the time, to see if that was, the, uh, uh, if that, if that was okay to go over the budget? Because that went way over the budget.
So, remember, that's why I, I share with you that the preventive maintenance, that budget, the one oh seven, we stay within that budget. The, and we couldn't provide a cost, or we, at, at least, I'm not able to quantify how many emergencies we're gonna have. So when you approve that item, in, in the, in the, um, minutes, it stays right there, that emergency costs are unknown, or repairs are unknown, because we don't know what's gonna break. Now, if I understand correctly, if you guys want more control as to how much money is gonna be spent, then give us a limit. You cannot exceed this limit for this fiscal year on emergency repairs or regular repairs, and we'll follow that.
Sessar, you, you answered, you answered-
Minister Vega, follow the policy the board adopted. Okay? If you wanna change the policy, change it.
Says that, it states in California law about the bids, right? Fifty thousand and over, it's supposed to come to us, public funds.
These are emergency-
Emergency, emergency contracts, correct, emergency contracts. But we knew, but look at, hold on, Richard, it was stated that they already knew what ACs needed to be changed. That was stated right here, or am I wrong, or, or am I right?
It's not ten air conditioners, Richard.
I think, I think, um-
I can say one, two, but not ten.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't say that exactly. What I said was that, before the year, we, we asked the techs what they recommend, what units they recommend. Okay, and then I also said that we try to accommodate that, okay? But that doesn't mean that those are the only ones we, we changed, there, there, there's some that come up that, that aren't identified, or on that list. Uh, but when they do come, the tech will remind us and say, hey, that one was on my list.
No, no, I, I-
So it's not like, like, we went hard charging after that list.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even saying that. My, my thing is, is if we knew that we had a contract for a hundred and two thousand, contracts for a hundred and two thousand, that's the way I see it, right? But like you pointed out, it was open-ended at the end. I understand that there's emergencies, I totally understand there's emergencies, but emergencies over two hundred and fifty thousand? Emergencies in a year over two hundred and fifty thousand, over four hundred thousand? I mean, when the roof, when, when the roof, you know, when you were talking about the roof at Godfrey Gym, when it opened up, right? You brought it to us, and you said, hey, this and this is going on. But you said yourself, it's three percent, right? You guys are allowed a three percent. Why did, why did you bring it to us then about the roof?
So three percent of our total expenditures has to go towards the upkeep of our facilities.
I understand that, Sessar, but what you stated in the beginning was three percent, right?
Three percent.
Of our budget is allocated for facilities.
Of our expenditures.
Expenditures, right? The roof, the roof, the roof was an emergency, correct?
Hmm, the roof, well, we went out to bid.
Why did we go out to bid?
Because we needed to know what the lowest bid was gonna be for the particular roof.
Okay, thank you.
That project came about because, because the air conditioners were on the roof, and, and there was too much damage, and there was no repairing it. After years and years of attempts, that, that's what, that's how come that project came about, just, just FYI. Um, it was my recommendation to, to put those air conditioners on the ground.
Oh, thank you for that.
Okay, you're welcome, but, but, because we, 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 um, we, we could, we couldn't beat that whole situation up there with the, with the pigeons and whatever. My staff, like when you mentioned that Artec Air hired for that, I couldn't find something reasonable and, and fast to deal, to deal with that problem. But I went up there once and, and, and cleaned it, just to show the guys that, you know, you could do it, but that-
They refuse, and I ain't going up, you ain't gonna make the work, you know?
So, um, we run into those issues, uh, sometimes, and, and that's why they, they make it easy. So, um, we run into those issues, uh, sometimes and, and that's why they, they make it easy. We're gonna re-roof the welding and we had to get it cleaned up or they wouldn't even give us a quote. You know, so it's a, it's a tough situation there. Um, but we operated in, in, in that emergency mode all, all the time because of the expectations. The expectations cannot be, um, dismissed. They are real. And those expectations came in when the board dynamic changed. I mean, uh, we got pressure left and right from former superintendent, former CBO, and it's the same now with this guy. You know, the expectation, our expectation is that we try to meet the expectations. But once we, we, we come here and, and, and the price gets to, to, to the board, then, you know, it's, it's, it's tough pill to swallow.
Chris, I don't, no, no, I'm talking-
This is, I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay, I think we're gonna hit the horse here to death here. I think we're, we're mistaken here. We understand the preventive maintenance, but you don't realize that you let this fire just run wild and had no control of it. To a point, it, 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 uh, ended up in a one point five million dollars.
Well, you keep emphasizing over three years, you keep saying one point five, I'm saying-
It's three years, three years, okay. And, and the contract was, um, it expired in June. We were still paying this company up to November. We paid them like almost close to two hundred thousand and we didn't even have kids in the classroom. So, we were changing air conditioners without having kids-
Because they needed to be maintained.
We were gonna have kids in October, we were gonna have kids in November, we were gonna have kids in, in January, because the dates kept changing with this-
All respects and not to interrupt it, we should've had a plan. Had a plan, again, and we need a plan for the future, because two years from now, I won't be here or CEO won't be here and so forth. We need a plan for someone that comes in so it could be spelled out that, you know what, Mr. so-and-so, we gotta buy twenty air conditioners.
We need a plan for, for the air conditioners, we need a plan for asphalt parking lots, we need a plan for, um, for concrete issues that we have. And all of those monies are, that's what you use those three percent for. You use the three percent to address those type of issues. This, this summer, we addressed, uh, Camarena's and that was the only one. We, we were targeting Kennedy Garden, we were targeting Rockwood and we were targeting Mainz. We didn't get to do those, but they're in dire need as well.
That's why we need the coordinator hired right away. That's what we need, what we can get on.
You know, one, one comment, um, as you, as Chris said, with the dynamic of the board changing, the expectation changed. We didn't wanna wait to have our kids suffer or the teachers suffer with the AC down, correct?
Yes.
So, we wanted to act fast.
Emergency mode.
Emergency mode, and this is what happened.
My understanding was that, and this, correct if I'm wrong, Chris, but then wasn't there a directive by the board to not let a HVAC unit, do whatever you have to do?
That's what I, you're right, when? I didn't say that, I, I didn't-
Our expectations changed with the board, we wanted things to happen fast. We're always, oh, we got, we got complaints, someone called me, the AC's down.
Nah, the only complaints we had were when we installed the climate tech monitors. That, that's when we had issues. That was, uh, rectified right away and we didn't have any issues anymore. But as far as these ACs, no. And I'll leave you at that. Just check how many times the counseling, uh, air conditioner was changed in the, in that high school. And I'll leave that alone, okay?
So, we were being, we, we have been operating under that notion that do whatever it takes to make sure the kids are safe, so.
And we're not, we're not here to, we're just here to go ahead, from this point forward, go ahead and-
So, so now I understand, Mr. Alvarado, I understand now that, you know, okay, so, and I agree with you. I agree, you know, in the past, there used to be a deferred maintenance program. But that went away. That went away because of the new funding formula, LCFF, and now because now they are requiring, instead of putting aside deferred maintenance funds, which I still think is a great idea, but that went away when the requirement to have three percent of our expected expenditures became into, you know, a, a, the law. When that became the reality seven years ago. So, for the last seven years, hardly any district has a deferred maintenance program because it's not required, because now the money has been put into that whole LCFF formula. So, but, but I understand that, I understand that you wanna plan, we can put together a plan. In fact, we kinda have already a plan and, and we'll bring it forward, you can place it, you can tell us if you wanna, if you want us to modify, and not just on HVAC, on other things. But do know and understand that my, in my own estimation, in my own opinion, whether it's a million and a half, three million, one million, five hundred thousand, that money was invested in our property, in our units. You know, and, 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 and to me, I did the right thing because I was making sure the kids were not under dire, extreme weather conditions. So, that was my understanding and based upon what I was told, that, that we were operating under a-
You are, oh, hold on, hold-
We should've gone out to bid if it was that.
But emergency, you can't go out and bid during an emergency.
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Vega, you're, you're saying, you're, you're trying to, you are trying to put it, you put it on to us that we don't care about and because it's on video, you, I, you, yes. There's a, this is a, so, no, let me talk, I always give you the respect that I, that I let you talk, no, allow, let me talk. So, we're not saying, we're not saying that we don't care about the student safety. Because that's what you just said, oh, there's, there's, no, that is not. You know, Chris has a job to do and he's going to do it. And you know what, I'm not gonna question if he needs to go to, to, uh, the high school and repair this and that, I, I'm not gonna question that. What I'm going to question is why you didn't come to us to give us these numbers on a case-by-case basis, at least every six months? Because I remember when we were talking about buying the trucks, you came to us a couple of times, say, you know what, this is gonna cost us this, you know what, this is gonna cost us this, you know what, this is gonna cost us that. When we're gonna buy books, you know what, board, uh, in about a year, I know we're gonna spend one point six, we're gonna spend two million, we're gonna spend this on books. That is what we are saying. This, all of the sudden, you give us, uh, the, the expenditures for, for ACs, or for HVAC, I should say, and it said us in, in the face like, oh, my god, this, it's a lot of money, which it is a lot of money. And we don't mind spending that kind of money to keep our kids safe, we don't. Our point is that somebody should've kept us in the loop. That is how we're saying. And now from, from now on, that's what needs to happen. You need to keep us in the, in the loop. We're not gonna say no when it's, when it comes to our kid's safety, just like we, we didn't say no when it came to buying the trucks. It was a lot of money, there's still a lot of money, but we need to keep our workers safe. Same thing with our students, we need to keep our, our students safe. But come to us, in this case, Carlos will ta- will come to me. And if something doesn't happen, you know what, the board is mad, but you know what's on me, because I didn't tell you. But don't keep us in the loop and the next three years and, oh, look, we spent two million dollars without you guys, uh, knowing about it.
Well, I will tell you this, that won't happen again.
Thank you.
That won't happen again. I'm not gonna let that happen again. So, now from now on, we don't, we'll, we'll talk later, but don't ignore it, I understand, I get it, I get it.
Well, if I can add, um, I think, look, we're all here for the same purpose, for the same reason, you know, we're, we're here for the kids. Um, so, I think what we need to work on is just those parameters, make sure that they're clarified and they're clear. Um, I think there's a contract that's coming up, right? There's made recommendations in regards to maintenance, like, uh, Mr. Vega mentioned, the contract is, is open. But now having this conversation, we need to make sure that we set a parameter.
What do you mean, but the contract is open, and that, that I didn't-
The contract is open in regards to replacement, right? Right, so, I, I think we need to have parameter, let me, let me explain why. And, uh, and the reason I say parameter is because, is it a threshold gonna be a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, just as an example? Because the MNO team does an excellent job of responding, making sure that we have our kids, our staff, have the air conditioner fixed, whatever it is that they need, right? But at the same time, we need to make sure that we have that parameter set, so that way we can go ahead and make that decision and get that air conditioner replaced. Uh, because we don't wanna get to the point, for example, that we don't have the flexibility and that we do have an air conditioner go down. And for whatever reason, maybe it wasn't part of the maintenance plan to be replaced, but for whatever reason, some air conditioners go out, sometimes in three, four years, for whatever reason, right? So, I just think it's important that the parameters are, need to be very clear in regards to what is the board giving us, you know, the administration, uh, MNO, uh, the ability to go out and be able to replace these air conditioners, if that makes sense. So, one thing is the maintenance component. And I think it was made very clear by the team that we were within that, where it became an issue or there's a concern with the board, and I understand that clearly, is that when it came to repair and replacement, now that's where it became a one point five million over three years, as Mr. Calderon mentions. Look, I've done walkthroughs at our sites. Uh, I was the principal of Enrique Camarena Junior High School for a few years. That site opened up in two thousand six, uh, and I've seen the replacement of some of the units that have been there, like, you know, Mr. De La Rosa mentioned, for, uh, fourteen years. So, to me, I actually felt, hey, this is great. This is great, the fact that these ACs are gonna be replaced when our students come in and staff come in, they're actually gonna have brand-new units. Um, I understand in regards to the, uh, the plan that we need to have in place. And that's something that we'll work on as a team. But I'm glad that we're having this conversation, so that way we can clarify as well what is the expectation of the board, which I think is very clear at this point.
Well, we should start with, I mean, you guys brought it up, we got seven, almost seven hundred days of absenteeism right here. That's a problem right there.
I see that's something that's-
Yeah, what I'm saying, but that's one of the, the core problem there is that we're generating money because we have almost seven hundred days of absenteeism. That's what the problem is, that.
Seven hundred days of, of-
Seven hundred days of absentee, but entitled absenteeism.
Well, it is, it is.
Be- because, because, uh, none of those employees, um, have sick leave banks that are, that are depleted or, or vacation banks that are depleted. They unfortunately have, uh, by law, a legitimate reason.
But as a, as a former supervisor, it comes to a point where you can't perform your duties if you're not at work. So, it's a performance duty. So, it's, it's something that-
Nothing much, nothing much that we can do about that because of, those are, they're-
That's one of the things that, that needs to be-
They are, they are entitled to that and-
I know they're entitled.
However, do we want, as a board, may, do we wanna set a threshold as to when to notify, ask, no?
No, that's why, that's why superintendent has emergency use of, what, what's it allocated out of, it's fifty thou- fifty thousand dollars, how much is it? Fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Uh, double check the actual.
At one time, I can't, I know, before it used to be twenty-five thousand, emergency or something like that, I think we moved it up to fifty thousand dollars, something like that. If I'm correct, I could be wrong.
I'll double check on that.
But I know something around there, right? In case of emergency, something happens, you, you, you can go ahead and do it at that time.
For contracts, Mr. Alvarado, for contracts?
No, no, just in case an emergency comes up, right, at one of the schools, superintendent can go ahead and say, what's going on, the right bit, and then pretty much come back, tell they, this happened, and that was it.
Well, here's, you're talking about his spending, uh, 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 his spending limit without having to ask us, that's where you, yes. What is it, uh, I thought it was, what is it, fifty or two hundred thousand or something like that?
No. We'll double check, but it was on-
That's something, that's, something like that could get covered right there.
But I think what we are, what we're saying is we don't wanna be blindsided by, by something like this from now on, so.
That's why, that's, the reason why I'm making a big issue is because, you know, over a million, the contract was over a hundred thousand, over three years, was three hundred thousand. I mean, you don't wanna see when somebody tells you, here, here's your, uh, check, was, by the way, your, uh, you went over a billion dollars. You know, you'd be like, oh, I thought I, I thought I, you know, I was within my budget.
This is where you can modify the contract, say, this is, this is legitimate.
Correct, that's something that, that we're gonna discuss later on, but that's what I'm saying, like, you know what I mean?
Yes.
It's not, I, we're not here pointing fingers, so that's just something that I was just like, whoa, one point five, that's, that's, that's a, that's a lot, that's a, that's a nice little sum right there.
Yeah. We were, the point is that we were blindsided by this. And, uh, and, and, and again, we have to answer to, uh, uh, to the people in the community. We have teachers that haven't had a raise, we have CSCA that hasn't had a raise, we have schools that need all these, uh, uh, all these things done to them, and yet, when it comes to this, nobody's checking. Why? Because, uh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, nobody's checking as to how much money is that we're spending. Okay, so, I think we need to talk about it when it comes to this, to this item. Uh, we need to be more careful as how I said that we spend the money now. Uh, 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 emergency, emergency items, we're not gonna question, especially when it's, when it's June and they're doing summer school and an AC goes down. We're not gonna question that, I think that-
That's an emergency, right?
It does an emergency, we're not gonna question that. What we're asking is that we, I don't know, every six months, every year, be kept in the loop. There's three years, like Lencio says, and, uh, and we were never notified about this, that is the issue.
Yeah, and I think for clarification, I'd rather have a, a parameter set, a threshold, and that's it. That way we know exactly where the limit is. Hey, if we're gonna get to that limit, we'll bring it back to the board at that point.
So, I think-
I think, I think there's a, there's a statute, right, in California law, if anything over fifty thousand dollars, public ones, it, it needs to be brought up to the board.
If there's something statute that says it can be, can be, uh, public work project emergency, there's an element.
Correct, that's public work, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about-
These are public work projects, yes.
So, again, we're, we're gonna talk about this and, and, uh, on the item when it comes to, uh, to our, for approval. However, um, like Mr. Vega said, maybe there needs to be a plan and who better to develop that plan than you and Mr. De La Rosa, who are the ones on the ground. Mr. De La Rosa is one on the ground, he knows all the day-to-day operations and he gets the phone calls, he gets the, uh, he gets the, uh, texts, the emails about, uh, things that need to be replaced immediately. So, again, I don't know, I don't know how we feel about that, but, uh, because I don't, I, I'm not an expert on that, o- o- on, 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 uh, on that matter, but Mr. De La Rosa, Mr. Vega, they are the ones that need to come up with a plan.
Yeah, but that's something that we need to discuss, I mean, that's something that can be developed later on, like, right now, we're just-
Yes.
You know, we're going through and stuff, they just kind of, you go on, but thank you.
But also, not only do, may need to come up with a plan, the site needs to come up with a plan too, 'cause De La Rosa was saying that in, in the old days, prior to two thousand fifteen, they would move to the cafeteria, whatever the case might be, depending on what the situation was. So, the school site needs to have a plan too, to give them enough time so they can go around and, and, you know, take care of the fires and, and, uh, keep the, the kids in a cool climate.
Right, and, and-
It's gonna be a challenge for both of you, but-
Exactly, and, and that's a good point that Mr. De La Rosa, uh, brought up, because that was the, the, the way it was before. I don't think we wanna go back to the way it was before. Uh, because we're dealing with staff and our students. And if we don't have enough space, where are we gonna put them? And what we don't want is getting complaints from parents, the community, staff, that we're not, uh, providing the service, the emergency service for, for our students and our staff. So, we also need to make sure that, uh, things have improved dramatically for the, for, for, for the better. And that's thanks to the MNO staff and everything that's been going on. There's obviously a concern when it comes to the spending, that's what we're dealing with right now. That's what we need to make sure that there is at least parameter set, a threshold, so that, um, is changed. And that way the board is well-informed and knows exactly how much we can spend. However, what we don't want is to delay, uh, the service to any of our offices, of our classrooms, of any of our, of our buildings.
I think, uh, I think, uh, in this case, Mr. Gonzalez, it's not, it's not even the amount of the expenditure, but it's the fact that there was a lack of communication from district office to us and letting us know how much money we have spent. I'm not, never gonna say no to replacing a unit. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything about that. But my point is, we need to be kept in the loop, we're not just a rubber stamp, we're not just here to rubber stamp whatever you guys put on to us. That's not, we're not here for, we're not here for that, okay? I'm not gonna deny, uh, uh, the, uh, basic things that our district needs to, to run efficiently, I'm never gonna do that. But we are here for a reason, the five of us are here for a reason. And we will support you, we will support you and you tell us, if you and Chris, hey, you know what, we need to, we need to, uh, 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 spend a hundred thousand dollars in the next year and a half to, uh, get this done, we will support you. But we need to know about that. That is, that is what we're here for, to support-
You keep repeating, so can we move on to the law, can we, you keep repeating yourself, that's the good time, you keep saying that, can we move on, please?
Let's move on, we'll talk about this later. I never interrupted you when you were talking, when you were present, so, no, yeah, you're interrupting me because I'm talking. Sorry about that. So, Mr. Mr. Gonzalez? Um, okay, we'll talk about this later. Okay, we can, we can have a sword and talk about this later. Okay.
Okay, overtime.
Yeah.
Dear Jesus. Okay, so, uh, this is your turn, Brian. Here, take one for the team.
I have to laugh.
This will just, this is a.
I have to laugh.
An overview here that just sort of lays the foundation of how overtime is structured. Um, per, um, a collective bargaining agreement and the merit system, so. Um, uh, we'll. Move on here. So first, it's, uh. Overtime is, is bound to the regulations under the CBA referred to as the collective bargaining agreement. And the merit system being in a merit system district with a personnel commission. And then, um, the people, the classifications that are not overtime exempt, meaning that they can earn overtime. Um, in the classified management ranks are the supervisors, managers, and coordinators. So that's a question that comes up a lot about overtime. The, uh, management, classified management members that are exempt from overtime. Are the following, their A, B, C, and D with the assistant super business, director of food services, executive director of maintenance, operations, and facilities. And the classified personnel director. So those positions are overtime exempt, so they are not able to claim overtime. Moving on here, we have the, um, overtime for all classifications. There is a seniority list by date of assignment that shall be maintained for each classification. These are all, this is all, um. Contract language that, uh, Mr. Vega put together for us. Um, the unit member at the work site with the earliest assignment date in the class shall have first opportunity to work overtime. A unit member who accepts or refuses an overtime assignment shall rotate to the bottom of the overtime list. So if they had the opportunity, but they didn't take it, they still go to the bottom of the list. They don't get to stay at the top list and then wait for the right opportunity to come. So they would go to the bottom if they decline. Um, number four with, in regards to bus trips. Uh, in regards to rotation of the assignment of bus trips, um, the rotation list shall include unit members under the cla- under the classification of mechanic. Uh, mechanics are required to have a valid bus driver's license, uh, as the other bus driver warehouse delivery and bus driver maintenance work classifications. Bus drivers' absences are high and coverage by mechanics is an essential function of their classification. So they're working on the bus, they have to be able to drive it, test drive it, make sure that the, whatever they're working on is working well. So that's why they have to have licenses. Um, then in emergency situations, which requires staff attention, um, unit members shall not be assigned to overtime work out of classification unless. Unit members within the class are given the first opportunity to perform such overtime work. So an emergency is defined in this section shall mean any condition which, uh, requires and has an immediate threat to the health, safety, or welfare of students. Oops. There we go. Um, so nothing in this section shall be interpreted as guaranteeing any employer or group, um, of employees. The assignment of overtime as a condition of their employment. Nor shall this section be interpreted as prohibiting the district from assigning extra time to employees on a seniority basis. So, um, there are, for example, in food services, there's an MOU for how that rotation works. And those are agreed upon by, uh, the association. Um, and so the personnel commission, whenever we're having extra work or overtime work, they. Are aware of the, um, guidelines on how they'll call people back to do that. It's not an easy job. When we were doing food services and we needed more people, it, it took several hours to call into the evening to, to try to get that, um, set up. Uh, then the last one there, during the school year, the district may hire extra help using the eligibility list. So those people of that same classification that are, that are eligible for that position, meaning they've tested and they've been on an eligibility list for an opening. And they may be able to be used, um, to fill in when needed, as we've done with custodial recently and other, other classifications. Questions on these bullets? Like I said, these are the foundations.
Can you go up to one of the questions?
Yes.
So do we have a list of seniority based, uh, times or?
That within each class, there's a, a seniority list. And they, once a year, the district will put out the seniority list of like higher dates for everybody, but within each classification, there's seniority lists. Oops, excuse me.
So, based on the classification, it's a seniority.
Yes. Proctors.
What's that?
Proctors or instructional aides or, yeah.
Or maintenance.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's a personnel commission's job to really keep track of that, and they put out a list every year of the whole classified unit on with seniority list. It's very helpful.
Are you, are you asking for, for overtime or just for seniority? For overtime? Oh, well, it's, it's done by site. It's, the, see, the personnel commission, um, has, uh, has a seniority list by classification district wide. For each classification. But when you deal with sites, then there, there's another smaller breakdown that. That determines how, how you, um, work to offer kids with overtime, uh, via seniority. It's by site, that's how the context is. How can we get away with that if they're still district employees?
Because it's within the site. That's what number two refers to. The unit member at the work site with the earliest assignment date in the class shall have first opportunity to work overtime.
That's something I'll, I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions? Oh, we have callback time. Skip this. Um, unit members required to return to work after they've already completed a full work shift on the same day shall be guaranteed a minimum of two and a half hours. Of overtime pay for the callback. So someone gets called back, they've been, they've worked a full day, we call them back and we need to. You know, maybe there's a, a break in a pipe and it takes thirty minutes to fix, they still get two and a half hours of overtime pay for coming back, um, after working a full day, full eight hours. Uh, district reserves the right to contract with private security service. This is really, uh, in regards to the after-hours security alarms. And then any employee shall have the right to refuse an offer to, uh, or a request for overtime or callback time, except in an emergency. That's a, pretty much a given.
All right.
All right.
After, sir, after, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Vega. Good evening.
Hello. All right, are you ready?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Yes, we can. Are you ready?
Yes, I am. Um, good evening, President Calderon, Calderon, uh, trustees, Calderon Junior, Alvarado Romero, and Magallanes. Um, my name is Esther Martinez and I'm here because I was invited to continue on this presentation, Mr. Vega, uh, is, uh, presenting to you. Um, but on the commission side. So in addition to what Ms. Dr. Thurman presented, um, uh, regarding the contract for represented employees. There's also a section in the, in education code and in the merit rules regarding, uh, supervisory and management employees. And it's even in, uh, both your own board administrative policy, which is forty-three hundred. Um, if you click the next, uh, there you go. So employees holding positions designated as classified senior management and supervisory positions. Those are entitled to all of the rights, benefits, and burdens of other classified employees. Next slide. Even though overtime can be paid, um, there's an exemption on ED Code four-five-one-thirty. Um, that does provide an exemption of overtime for some classified positions. Um, click. The designation of exempt positions, those need to be done by the personnel commission at the request of the governing board. Currently, merit rule seventy point one hundred point four exempts four classifications, which Dr. Thurman already shared with you. It's the assistant superintendent of business services, which is Mr. Vega, the new position of executive director. The director of food services, which is Mr. Venegas, Gilbert Venegas. And the classified personnel director, which is myself. Um, next slide. To be excluded from such overtime positions, the positions or classes must clearly and reasonably be management positions. And so in approving these classes for exemption, the personnel commission, when applicable. And that's when the commission has a new job description at your request. Or the governing board, when the governing board asks the commission to, um, exempt other positions. Each one needs to certify in writing that the duties and the salary meet the tests that the labor department has put in place. It also needs, um, the authority of the positions. They need to certify that they are in such of a nature that they need to be set apart from all the other ones. And the fourth one is that the employee serving in the excluded positions will not be unreasonably discriminated against. As a result of being ex- uh, excluded from the overtime. Something to keep in mind, trustees, is that job titles do not determine the exempt status. In order for an exemption to apply, all, okay, and I put emphasis on all, of the following tests must be met. We need to ask ourselves, does the employee earn a weekly salary of at least six hundred eighty-four dollars per week? Does the employee, is the employee's primary duty consist of performing office or non-manual work? The third one, does the employee's primary duty includes the exercise of discretion? And independent judgment with respect to matters of significance? This to me implies that the employee has the authority to make an independent choice. Free from immediate direction or supervision and does not need prior approval to make a decision and create policy. All this, I'm taking it from the labor department, okay? So the labor department defines primary duty. As the principle or the main, the major, the most important duty that an employee performs. Determination of an employee's primary duty must be based on all the facts. In a particular case with major emphasis on the character of the employee's job as a whole. Remember, I can't stress enough, jo- job titles do not determine an exempt ta- status. In order for an exemption to apply, the employee's specific job duties and salary must meet all the requirements. The requirements are, as I have said, the weekly salary of six hundred eighty-four. And the primary duty consists of non, um, I mean, of office or non-manual work. Um, and does the employee's primary duty includes the exercise of discretion and independent judgment with respect to matters of significance? Those are the things that the personnel commission would use as a guideline. In order to determine if when you request that a new position be created. Those are the things that the personnel commission will look like, will look at. As an example, the most recent one that you create, that you created, the, um, executive director position. Um, the personnel commission, I did the research, I did the, does this pers- does this classification, will they earn at least the six hundred eighty-four? Will the primary duty consist of, you know, office or non-manual work? And will they use discretion and independent judgment without having to ask for, uh, supervisory, um, approval? So in the case that did, it did meet the requirements, so that position was made exempt from the overtime. So that's the guidelines that the personnel commission would use to consider an exemption. Um, that pretty much, uh, completes the, my portion of the presentation. I don't know if there's any questions from the trustees?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, Esther, so.
Thank you, Esther.
You're very welcome.
Continuing on, so what is the current, the current overtime process? So the current overtime process, the only approvers of overtime is Caesar Vega and Carlos Gonzalez. The assistant super business and the superintendent. Those are the only two people that approve overtime. Um, and I know that in the past and in other districts, directors, managers, not so much entry-level supervisors. But directors and managers have that discretionary authority, but in this case, it's just us. All right, so. We have been making a lot of strides to improve, improve our, um, accounting of overtime process. And I'm going to let my accounting supervisor, Fabiola Calderon, talk about it because she's, uh, directly helping me with. You know, the whole new system that we're in the process of implementing, uh. Fabiola, are you there?
I'm here.
Can you talk about, you know, this slide and the current, uh, overtime, the current, uh, keeping and accounting process?
Yes, good evening, trustees. Um, so, uh, currently, we use the actual physical time cards to record. Uh, the overtime that's worked, and those time cards are submitted to the payroll department on a monthly basis. And we process for payment. Um, pretty soon, we're going to replace that process with, um, the mi- the biometrics. Or the proximity cards at the new kiosks that are going to be installed at all of our, at all of our sites. Not only our school sites, but also our warehouse, uh, the old Aurora site, and here at the district office. Um, so what we're doing right now is we're in the implementation process. I am setting up all of our employees' information in, in the software, uh, including their, their, uh. Their work hours. Uh, so whenever somebody, uh, is pre-approved to work overtime. Um, I know that Mr. Vega mentioned that only the superintendent and assistant soup can approve overtime. It's actually a preapproval. Nobody is allowed to work overtime unless they've obtained a preapproval, then they can proceed to work overtime. So once they've worked overtime with the new procedure, we'll be able to pull reports from frontline. And that report is going to go to Mr. Vega for his review and for his approval. Right now, we forward him all the green time cards, all of the overtime, uh, green overtime time cards. And he approves them before we process them. Well, with the new process, we'll just forward over a report from frontline. He'll review it, he'll sign off on it, and then we'll proceed to, um, to pay the overtime. The timeline for, uh, this new process, if there aren't any, uh, technical difficulties that are, that are foreseen. Um, we expect to launch, uh, in February, here at the district office, the warehouse, and the old Aurora site. And in March, we would launch this new process over at all of our school sites.
Any questions on this?
No.
So, we did a, uh, an overtime analysis, the same for the last, uh, three years, started with, well, actually, three and a half years. Started with twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. These are calendar years. And, uh, you know, we wanted to show the board that. Granted, this is a year of a pandemic, or twenty twenty was, and twenty twenty-one continues to be that. The overtime is significant, significantly lower than prior years. And granted, we don't have the field trips, we don't have a lot of the normal work that we normally have on a yearly basis. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, w- we ended the year twenty twenty, and I haven't included. Uh, the month of December for twenty twenty, uh, but it's not that much. And, uh, so the total still is, well, in the low, low, low five thousands. So, you know, just to do an analysis so that you can see. Uh, it is true, like, you know, uh, Fabiola stated, all the overtime is pre-approved. If Chris or Dario or anyone in my department has a need for overtime, I've, the first question I ask is, is it really needed? Can it wait for the following day? Is this an emergency? I, I mean, I, I ask a lot of questions before I say, okay, go ahead. Uh, you know, and that's because I want to be cautious and I know how, you know, the topic of overtime is delicate. So it is pre-approved. So the process that's already in place is pretty strict. Like I said, I think we're the only districts that only the soup and the assistant soup are the approvers of overtime. Nobody else. Like I said, I think we're the only districts that only the Supo and the Assistant Supo are the approvers of overtime, nobody else. So, I've asked Dario, and I know that you heard from Chris in regards to how overtime is incurred in his department. I wanna give Dario an opportunity to speak because, look, Dario has one of those departments that generate the most overtime. And board, we are very short-staffed with bus drivers, and, you know, we just had one retire tonight. And this is not the regular year, but during a, during the regular year, Ms. Magallanes, we have field trips that we go as far as San Diego, Riverside, LA, and these positions, they're not only bus drivers, they're also warehouse people or maintenance workers. So, they have two duties. So, one is primary, which is driving. The other one, well, the work's, you know, just falls behind. So, you know, it's, it's just a, it, it's, it's a very difficult complexity when you have dual jobs. And when you do one, the other one suffers. Dario, are you there?
Could you please unmute your mic?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I got it. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can hear you. Dario, can you talk, can you share with the board, you know, the complexity of overtime in your department?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Vega, for having me. Good evening, trustees. So, we average close to nine hundred students on a daily basis that we transport. That's to and from school. That's not including, of course, the extra curriculum activities. That being said, fifty percent of the students are special needs students. They are bused to different school districts, county, El Centro Elementary, El Centro High School, if you will. So, they're all over the place. So, we deal with different bell, service hours, if you will, throughout the day. We start early in the morning at six thirty, transferring our students. So, our bus, our bus driver is pretty much on the bus through the whole day. Just for the fact, because some of the services are not rendered here in Clexico, so we have to transfer our students to different school sites or to a different county, if you will. So, that generates quite a bit of overtime because the drivers obviously need to transport students all over the county. Like I said, we average close to nine hundred students on a daily basis, dividing two thousand students that we pick up at Betty Joe, homeless, kids in a shelter, for example, special programs, five or four programs, mechanic, you name it. All those students are, need to be bused to our district, whether they live in El Centro, whether they live in Imperial, whatever the situation is that, or the home is that, we need to go pick them up and bring them to Clexico. So, that puts a lot of burden, of course, on the extra hours that we perform and the overtime, you know, in order for, to transport our students. So, needless to say, on weekends, you know, we do transport our athletes as well, you know, whether they have tournaments. Our band, they go all over. As you know, they have different activities, San Diego, Los Angeles, SeaWorld, Magic Mountain. And so, you know, there's a lot of tournaments. Another, another that we do quite a bit is our, our junior high sports. Since they came aboard here a few years ago, you know, that puts pressure on transportation. And not only are high school students or athletes need to be transported, that also includes the junior high sports. So, you know, our, our drivers run over, and of course, it generates quite a bit of overtime. And then, when they're done, or when they're able, they gotta get off the bus, of course, and perform those duties as delivery warehouses. That we also do within the district, in the district mail, if you will, county deposits. So, all those extra duties we have to perform, and I'm pretty sure Ms. Vega showed this to you, when you have six bus drivers slash warehouse that pretty much also that kind of work.
Dario, can you talk about what happens when two or three drivers are absent in one day?
Oh, boy. Then we have to piggyback, sir. Then what happens, it puts a lot of burden, of course, around the, that's against very, logistics, you know, gets very stressful on us because we still have to transfer students. So, there are times we have to piggyback, in other words, have one driver pick, pick up the other, the other route, if you will. Or, if a mechanic's available, I'll get him to assist us because, of course, you know, he is also a driver, I mean, a certified bus driver, if you will, so he can jump in as well and, and assist us. So, you know, yeah, I mean, we don't have the luxury of having that many bus drivers out there, so even a one bus driver's out, it puts a lot of pressure on our department.
So, Dario, when you pull your mechanic out to drive, what happens to the maintenance of buses and vehicles and all of that?
That gets, that takes, well, that's the bad burning on Ms. Vega, because our primary, our primary, of course, is to transport our students. That's number one. You know, we need to get two in front of school, of course. That's our goal. So, everything else obviously takes secondary, you know, whether it's, we have to work on the vans. We do have a fleet over, I think my inventory, if I'm not mistaken, we have like, oh, let me see, seven hundred or so white vehicles out there that, you know, in the whole district, our, our mechanics also, you know, maintain, of course, and seventeen buses. So, we have three mechanics, and that puts a lot of pressure on their route. And they still have to work, get the work done. If a bus breaks down, they have to stay overtime, whether they need to come in a Saturday or stay late in the evening to get the bus ready for the following day, to get the route going. Because a lot of our buses do require lifts, you know, because we do have one of their students that are in a wheelchair. And unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of having that many buses with lifts. We're working on it. We're getting a lot better than we were two years ago. But if one of those buses goes down, our mechanics need to stay and get that fixed. If they're driving, they gotta stay late evening to get that bus fixed, get it ready for the following day.
Thank you, Dario. And, and I bring that up, board, because, look, we, we're short on drivers. We don't have an in-house trainer. Buses break down, people have to drive, drivers are slash warehouse people. The warehouse go, work gets behind. If the mechanic has to drive, we are required to have forty-five day inspections on time. CHP regulates us, and if we are late on our forty-five day inspections, we get dinged. Am I wrong, Dario?
You're correct, sir. The law is very complex when it comes to transportation. That's a whole different monster.
So, so, look, I'm just trying to shed some light on, sometimes I have to approve overtime for these guys to fix the buses or to fix the wheelchair ramp, or because they have to drive. I mean, I have to make ends meet, and sometimes I, I don't, look, I don't have a lot of flexibility when it comes to that. So, that's why I need to work with them as much as I can, but I do go through a process of, does it really need to be done? Can it wait for next week? Can we send it to the shop instead? You know, because we're shorthanded. Thank you, Dario. Any questions for him? You wanna talk about your department, overtime and emergency calls or anything like that?
So, at, at the maintenance department, and I was sharing with Mr. Vega when, when he was preparing for this board meeting, we have scheduled overtime, which we haven't done in a very long time. And we have holdover overtime, if you will, which means that it's overtime hours, maybe an hour, maybe two, at, at the end of the shift, so that employees can address certain issues or, or button something up, make it safe, so that they can go home for a night. Sometimes it's just to push through and finish, so that they, in order to get something ready for the next day, okay? And then there's callback overtime. The callback is, is what we generate the most. And that's when, when there's an after-hours call comes to me, then I determine if I need an employee or not. Okay, so, you go and you assess if I need a plumber, if I need an electrician, or, or, and so on. A skilled maintenance worker. Those are the types of over, overtime that we have. We have been doing better at limiting that, but the bottom line is, when we call an employee and we ask them to perform duties, we're gonna pay them two point five hours automatically, as per, as per their CBA. So, that increases the, the actual number of paid overtime, okay? There are options for us to offer comp time instead, especially on that carryover, to extend a day. Some guys will opt to take comp time hours, but the, the vast majority take, take payment, okay? Holidays, what have you. I personally, or in my role as supervisor, I get calls almost every night. And then I determine whether or not I'm gonna act them. Okay, some, some that can wait and some that can't. So, security, night security, they'll run into a leak of some kind, and I'll go so far, send me a video, show me, show me how bad it's leaking, you know, because when calling the guys, you're not just calling somebody else, you're, you're, you're waking up a whole, a whole family too in the middle of the night, you know? So, so I make that determination. Sometimes they're gracious enough to send me a video. Then, and from there, I can tell, oh, no, I gotta, I gotta get out there, you know? So, we try to curtail as, as many callbacks as we can, but it's, 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 it's quite a bit of calls that I receive. Not so many coming out to staff, so, so we try to isolate. But, pretty basic for us, but scheduled overtime, that's one other thing. That's when you go to the seniority list and, and you, you, you go in, in order of seniority. And callbacks, they're considered emergency callbacks. So, you try to, like, if I have a plumber, I'll call this plumber, and then the next time I'll call the other plumber. And so, and, but if they won't answer, you gotta revert back to the other one. You, you can't wait a, a long time to, to, for them to answer, to return your phone call. You gotta keep moving down the line. And that's how we handle callback. The carryover, it's by assignment. If, if I have you guys doing a particular assignment, those two are gonna, are gonna, are gonna do that. I'm not gonna call somebody from, who wasn't part of that one assignment, just, just so he can go and finish the last two hours. Doesn't work that way. Okay, that's pretty much for, pretty much it for us.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? So, last, when it comes to overtime, look, board, in the business department, we go through so much work in terms of developing budgets. We just don't have one budget. We just don't have one account. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of accounts. And can, can you get Maribel online? Maribel, are you there?
Yes, sir.
So, I want you to hear from Maribel directly how difficult it is to manage a one hundred and fifty million dollar budget that is composed of state revenue, local revenue, federal revenue, and other re- or other kinds of revenues, like grants and all of that. It is very difficult because, and, and you would, you know, you would think, okay, you know, the word gets redundant every year and year after, but the more money we get, the more we spend. The more POs are generated, the more things are purchased, the more things are procured. Maribel, can you share with the board, go through, go through the fiscal process? Can, can you share with the board how lengthy, how difficult it is to put together a first interim, second interim, closing the books and all of that? Can, can you talk to them, please?
Yes, good evening, Board of Trustees. Yes, it's Mr. Vega. In addition to our day-to-day payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, our audit reconciliations, grant reporting, fiscal requirements, cash monitoring, maintenance of our capital projects and facilities, our meetings, our trainings that we have, and we have to provide technical and customer service to all of our district-wide staff. We also have critical budgeting and auditing deadlines during the fiscal year that requires a considerable effort and time. And let me give you an example. For example, in order for us to adopt our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two July first budget, we need to start the process now. We need to start our, our, and prepare our escape system to be able to roll forward all those necessary items that need to be forward to, to our next fiscal year. And that includes, for example, review and updates, roll forward our general ledger accounts. We need, we need to adopt a school calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two in order to update and roll forward our employees' calendars. That's, that's critical. Why is it important to work on our calendars? Because that defines the days that the employees will actually work, the non-working days, the holidays. When will the contract begin? When will the contract start for every employee? We need to review and update, roll forward employee salary schedules, pay cycles. We need to analyze and update our position control in order to roll forward the positions that will be transferred to the new year. We also need to analyze, update and review our deductions, contributions, or benefit providers, or health and welfare rates, or workers' gun rates, or pension rates, or bacons. All of this needs to be updated before even building up our July first budget. We need also to roll forward our assignments. We need to calculate our side discriminatory fund, funding or general fund funding for all of our school sites. We need to work with educational services regarding our LCA budget. We also need to create a restricted program budget, a model, model for all of our category, post or title ones, monies, or Aces, all of those programs. We also need to create a July first budget model and a June thirtieth estimated budget model using our local control funding formula or LCF calculator. We need to review, analyze all of our prior allocations and actual, to determine budget amounts. And also calculate direct and indirect costs using the new rate for applicable programs and funds. Need to create multi-year projections using planning factors and key assumptions. And we also need to process our, and, and analyze and create cash flows for current and outgoing years. We also need to, during our budget process, we also need to make sure that we meet our minimum classroom compensation requirements, especially transportation and transportation, MOE, which is your maintenance of effort requirements. And that, that's all part of a budget. Every time there is a budget, right now, for example, we already adopted our first interim. Now, we have to work on our second interim. We're currently working on a second interim that has to be presented March fifteenth. And in the meantime, we also have to be working already with budget development as to our July first budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We also have to be working on our pre-audit, or pre-audit. Basically, as Mr. Venez explained before, they actually review everything. They review and test payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, all of our construction commitments, contract agreements, or local control and accountability plan, or after-school education and safety data, or comprehensive safety plan, or interim reports, or general ledger, bargaining agreements, or bell schedules, or district calendars, employee regio, child nutrition. So, it's, it's pretty, pretty, the ver- the, the various job that we have. Every time we go to an audit, we have an audit, preliminary audit starting in April. Then we have another one when we close our books, that's after September fifteenth. So, pretty much is, is all your bomb. It, it, it doesn't really stop for, for our business services. And one of the things is, is sometimes it's our stuff, and I really, really screen that overtime for my staff. But, for example, if we have a lot of daily, eh, technical assistance that we actually have to, and a lot of interruptions during the day, sometimes it's hard for us to really concentrate on this type of deadlines. As this deadline's creating all this budget, our first interim, second interim, all this really needs full concentration. So, anyone have any questions?
And, and, and a lot of it, look, she's absolutely right when it comes to, every day, we have the regular things that we do during the day. I know my boss keeps me busy all the time. I plan my calendar, but all of a sudden, he calls me and I'll have to go help him with whatever he needs. But that's why, that's why I'm here. But a lot of our work, we do a lot of our work at nights or on weekends. Because that's the time that we're not interrupted. And, and, and a lot of times, you know, the reports, the budget that we have to put together, we have no choice because we also depend on HR to do their job, to do their thing. And we also depend on the county to create the models, to create the things that we need so that we can move forward. And it's a systematic system, and, and, and if, if step one doesn't happen, we, we can't move forward until step one moves forward. And sometimes, step one happens on Friday at five PM. So, we cannot afford to lose any time. We have to continue mov- moving forward because the last thing you want is for the county to call you that, hey, where's your budget? Hey, you missed a deadline. Hey, how come this, this is not done? So, I'm trying to put things in perspective as to why we some- So, I'm trying to put things in perspective as to why we sometimes have to approve overtime. That is not a dire emergency, but it is a need, otherwise we won't be able to get things done. Any questions for Maribel? So, look, I know that we're running late, so I'm just quickly, we're gonna bring in Fabiola to talk about this, but look, we have two bonds, measure V and measure Q, soon to be certified by you. This work is after hours. Meetings, presentations, reporting, you know, talking to the CBOC committee, this is, this work is done after work hours because, eh, you know, in order for us to meet with the CBOC, CBOC committee, it has to be after five thirty. Because they all have a daily job. And to prepare the reports, you know, to present to them so that they can in turn come back and tell you whether or not we are, you know, spending the money, how we are supposed to be spending it, you know, we have to provide detailed re- reports to them as well. And all of this gets audited, and we have to prepare those audits as well. So, now we measure Q coming on board, now we have two bonds. And all of that is gonna generate work, and unfortunately, it's after work hours, on weekends, but we have to get it done. So, look, I know that, you know, there was a, you know, can, can overtime be under dire circumstances only? We cannot operate, sometimes we need to get work done, and I'd much rather give you a clean audit report, a clean budget, something that is accurate, instead of taking shortcuts that at the end of the day the county will catch and will be able to certify. And everything and anything that we do in the business department, we do it. We try to be as fast as we can, but when you work with so many numbers, fast, it's actually slow. Because we make a mistake, we have to come back and to find it, it takes hours to find those mistakes. So, you know, just put it in per- in perspective. So, any questions on overtime? The system that we have in place, only the superintendent, only Caesar approves overtime. It's pre-approved, we have a system that if we don't think it's needed, we wanna prove it, if it's needed, we have to support credit, we have to support transportation, we have to support every other department. That's the system that we have in place. How else can I improve? Any recommendations, anything that you suggest that I should do?
Just, just a comment from me, um, in regards to the approval, callbacks? I don't call Mister, Mister, Mister Vega at two in the morning to ask his permission to call an employee. Let's, let's be clear, let's be clear about that. That decision is made by me, and then it's reported out to Mister Vega. Okay, um, and that's in regards to callbacks.
Questions? Anything that I can answer regarding overtime? So, the last item in my, in this part of the presentation is, there was a request for a contract audit. Uh, M and O, MOT, business, you know, just an overall audit on where we are with the contract and expiration dates. Uh, I can go line item by line item, but pretty much every single contract that has been, come through the board, is still pretty frequent with the exception of a couple. And I'll go exactly to, to the very last where they are. So, Articare, I, I, look, you already told me, I stood up on that one, it won't happen again. We have another one, Ausco, Asco, Ausco, linen services. That one has been expired since June thirty, twenty nineteen. So that's one that I have to go out and bid. Now, I don't know if going out to bid will make any sense because there's only like, what, two companies that can provide the service? So, why not just ask for a proposal and select the lowest if we need it, I mean, it's just the linens. The other one is CR and R. I have never gone out to bid for utilities or trash, but, you know, I guess we have to do that here. But there's only two companies that provide trash collecting services. I can go out and bid and have them bid, or I can ask them for what's your rate, what is the lowest that you can accommodate us? So, those are the only contracts that are in the red, have expired. Questions? That, that work has already been completed. Done, that's got to do. Mm-hmm, we're only waiting for the equipment, but that work is done. It's done. Okay, so, the, once the equipment comes in, there are mirrors that we need to install, the, the, the gym will have mirrors throughout, well, in cer- certain areas. But we cannot install the mirrors because of the weight and all the equipment that's gonna come in. Once it comes in, then the mirrors will win, but the work has already been done. If you haven't stopped by and seen it, it's beautiful. Ms. Magallanes, you were there. That's for gym, it's, it's, it's phenomenal, beautiful.
Mr. Vega, um, last meeting you were clear that we would not, that we needed to have a contract for everything. So, I don't understand why, even though you're saying that Ausco is the only one that does it here for us, and the CR and R, there is, there's only two companies that do trash, but we need to have a contract, even if it's the same contract. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but we need to have some sort of a, of a contract with companies, eh, to see how much we're paying.
Eh, eh, if I may, a contract, look, for somebody that's gonna come in and provide a service inside the school every so often, I can see that need to have a contract. But if it's someone to come in and collect trash, I mean, I, I can have a contract, I can go out and bid.
Well, how does the rest of the board feel about CR, uh, CR and R, that's the trash company?
Yeah, like, there's a city of, uh, Callexico. So, maybe you may wanna go out to bid and see who, um, yeah, like, wish, yeah, they, they, they do the city of Callexico.
We've, we've, we've done both. We've done both, so, again. Yeah, so, and, uh, and with Ausco, even if it, even if they're the only company, well, but still.
There's another company that, that also.
Yeah.
Ameri- and, and Ausco. There's another one. There's one in Brawley and one out of Yuma.
Well, you know what, we need to have a conscience for everything that we do, as, as a public entity, we need to, we need to show what is it that we're doing and why. So, let's get it, let's get those, I mean, unless the board has a, a different opinion. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mister Vega, and it's.
Thank you, everybody who participated, thank you.
It's ten twenty-three. Go ahead.
Eleven thirty.
There's a motion for Mister Calderon, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Mister Avarado, Altona Ferro, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you, and that was, uh, H two, H three, CalFresh Healthy Living.
Uh, London, do you want me to share my screen, or should, or wait, I think it'll be faster if I click next.
Okay, give us just a second, I don't know if the board is. But yes, you can share your screen if you, if you prefer, Mister Wong.
Oh, awesome.
Uh, for the school board, I don't know if we're in a break or not, let us know if we can, uh, Mister Wong can proceed with his presentation, thank you.
Go ahead and start, please, here he comes.
Hi, everybody, good evening, uh, uh, fellow Bulldogs, I'm sorry, this is a late evening, I'm gonna try to run through this presentation as fast as possible. It's the final report, uh, from the Callexico High School Eco Gardens Youth Led Participatory Action Research Project. Uh, from the previous year, I'm Chris Wong, Community Education Specialist with University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources Center here in Hopeville. Um, and today I'll be presenting alongside, uh, my brother Matthew, uh, landscape architect, grad from Harvard School of Design. And we had another student who had to unfortunately jump off, uh, but she was the president of the Eco Garden Club who created this presentation of, that you see on, that you see hopefully today. So, the Eco Gardens Club's mission is to extend evidence-based knowledge and education uh, on homeschool and community gardening to Callexico and Imperial County residents, providing outreach and volunteers, volunteer opportunities for students to enhance local sustainable and healthy food systems for families and neighborhoods, uh, supporting research and development through learner-centered experiences, promoting science, horticulture, environmental literacy. Uh, I work for the University of California, but within a department called CalFresh Healthy Living. Um, and so, we've had, had some partnerships in the past with the district. At Jefferson and at Caesar Chavez, we're conduct, we're coordinating, uh, nutrition classes with the kindergarten and pre-k, uh, TK classrooms. Uh, we did so at Dula Elementary School last year, and, uh, where we also coordinated the T S Teachers Cooking Academy, um, with Chef Nunes and the culinary classroom. And then we also work a little bit with Miss Betty Nunes's CTE course with another T S Teachers project, where they go in and extend our, our nutrition, uh, education, nu- nutrition education curriculum as well. Um, one of the things that we're gonna talk about today very quickly is the, the YPAR Eco Garden Club. Uh, what is YPAR? It's basically a process by which students become mini UC student researchers, they identify issues within the community, they co- develop research questions, uh, they develop, uh, conduct research methods, and any data that they can, that they collect, they make recommendations on to stakeholders and, uh, board members such as yourselves. The issue that, that we're focusing on today is, is tied to Mister Gilbert Venegas's presentation earlier today. We want to curb the rising rate of, of childhood obesity and adult obesity in, in, in our county. In California, we're in the yellow there, but if you zoom into Imperial County, we're in the dark red. Um, we're one of the highest, uh, childhood obesity, um, counties in the state. And it's paired with very low rates of physical activity. And one of the contributing factors to all this is also food insecurity, uh, which we also lead the state in, uh, we have a lot of hungry children. And so, part of the research that the students, uh, created in order to address these issues, um, is presented here. I'm gonna show you guys a, a survey, where we surveyed three hundred and seventy-five students, uh, around the valley. Those, uh, the survey was created by two former students from the high school who now graduated. Uh, it was disseminated all throughout last year. Uh, but the three seventy-five were spread out throughout Imperial County. Most of them have never visited a community garden, but a lot of them have practiced some form of gardening in the past. But when asked if they knew of any existing gardens in Imperial County, a lot of them said no. When we asked if they thought there is a need for more fruit trees in the valley, uh, most of them said yes for very obvious reasons, um, including addressing food insecurity. And then when we measured the interest in joining a community garden, there is a high level of interest primarily, including data showing, if we had some sort of farm-to-school program at our campus, on, uh, at our campuses at the high school, where we're locally sourcing locally, uh, locally grown food, or we're having agr- agriculture education, we believe, uh, and the ser- the people who filled out the survey believe that we've increased roots and vegetable conception, which in turn leads to a better nutrition, uh, lower rates of obesity. And so, our, our student Eco Garden Club President was going to present on this section, but basically, they reached out at the beginning of last year, um, to fix up the old location as we do every, every summer. And we did a little bit of community mapping with the students, we had, uh, we have technical assistance from the UC Division Center for Regional Change. Uh, they, they helped us develop, uh, the research and guide us. And so, they planted in October, and we had a good amount of students, uh, we were relocated, thanks to, uh, and, and thank, thank you, Mister Crystal LaRosa, if you're still in the room, for saving the boxes, um, during the construction of Chef Nunes's culinary classroom. Uh, but the students restarted their garden and they persevered, um, in a new location. They were planting and harvesting things all the way up until they were sent home, uh, after COVID. Um, we had a composting workshop from our local, local master gardeners. Uh, they harvested carrots, they harvested broccoli, they harvested radishes. Um, and mostly this presentation is to just update you on the existence of the club, uh, and to hopefully expand on the garden-enhanced nutrition, uh, education, that, opportunities that we have through our program. And so, I'll kick it off to my brother to, to explain, um, some of the slides that are coming up now. Matthew, can you unmute?
Thanks, Chris, and hello to everyone. Um, I'm very excited to flip through these slides. Before that, I just wanted to, um, kind of, a little bit about how, um, we kind of arrived at the site. As you saw pictures before, where this site used to have these old planter beds that were part of the, uh, Eco Garden Club. And, and they were relocated. Oh, I think, can y'all hear me? Okay. And so, uh, but by chance, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a, a landscape architect in, in San Francisco, and, and because of COVID, as, as, as many others around the world, that, uh, relocated down in Callexico and I'm working remotely. And so, uh, Chris immediately came up to me, he said, Matt, um, we'd love for you to take a look and, 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 and lend us a hand in, in kind of, started to dream into a, a different opportunities. And the potential for a very simple rectangle. And so, this is the exact, uh, the site today, and it's, it's, it's near the bandroom and right adjacent to the culinary kitchen. And Chris, go ahead, you know my cadence. And so, the, the question became, and, and we posed it in early meetings, um, of, uh, the simple rectangle, uh, what can it become? And maybe it could be something in food production and, 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 and Chris's efforts along with the students and Janessa, the, a lot of the mission, the mission is very much based around this idea of, of food. They could potentially become, take it one step further and, and, and make them productive planters similar to what they had already established before. Alternatively, the site could also be, if you go next, Chris. You can kind of just flip through these, potentially a greenhouse. Education or nursery. And so, you start kind of getting a, a, an idea where we're getting to is, is, is this, this plethora of, of, of different programs, but are all somehow related, uh, as it ties into nutrition, education, and ultimately into community building. Um, and, and we end here with a kind of the Etho, but to garden, Eco Garden, because ideally, in, in, in all, we, we kind of combine and create a synergy of, of, of all these different components to then create a, a, a very special place. And of course, the rectangle is limited, uh, uh, area, but we do believe that i- if anything, this effort could offer a, a way of looking into, into the master planning of, of, of future developments. And if you can continue, Chris? Thank you. And so, back at the site, very slimpy, the dimen- simply the dimensions are, um, if you go to the next one, about a hundred and thirty, uh, by thirty-odd feet. And, and Mister Del Rosa and his team have, have. And Mr. Delarosa and his team have, have done some work on it recently where they're expanding this, this major thoroughfare, but from our understanding, it's trafficked a lot by students. And so we see that as an opportunity, one, just the density of number of students circulating. It's a good, it's well positioned to, to be able to become something as, as almost a showcase of what we're trying to achieve. And so in these slides, we're, just to walk you through it, we're going to start from something very simple, as you would imagine, to something, I guess, the pie in the sky, if I may say. But the reason for that is that, as originally, we started kind of like, oh, let's do, maybe we just build a bunch of garden, plant, raise planter beds. And so then these questions started prompting like, okay, so beyond that, why would we serve ourselves short? And there's nothing that holds us back from actually envisioning something that can truly be state-of-the-art. And so from a very primitive, but yet highly productive, the space, as we could imagine it as similar to before, but we, we maximize the area and make it truly highly productive and still tied to education. And you would imagine these kind of planter beds could be built in partnership with different programs or the introduction of woodshop. If we move on, we take it one step further, and so similar concept, still productive, it's still an eco garden, but then we're introducing a prefabricated greenhouse where it allows us to now control the climate of what we're growing in terms of edible food. And it can potentially offer, offer a greater range of what students can grow ultimately as it ties to learning, more exposure to different species. And so if we continue to next, and we're getting kind of through them, and then we, okay, so then we think it can still be within the range of a prefabricated unit where it becomes a little larger. And then this really becomes a matter of balancing what you would see in the green, kind of like the botanical garden, something more natural, so it's kind of beautiful. But then you also have the productive planters. And then again, in the center, you have this greenhouse where you are able to grow a different number of species of plants. And elaborating one step further, okay, let's take it, let's take it even bigger and make it truly productive and rethink the orientation as it works with student traffic during, during school session. And, and the idea here is that, and you'll notice in if you ever, if you go back to this presentation, the thinking for, the pathways and thoroughfares are very, very logical, and they're just axial geometries, just, just to enable movement in terms of fire code. But Chris, if you continue to the next one. And so as we now, then we get to kind of what I had said earlier about this, that the bigger vision is we start departing from something that's prefabricated and actually into the potential of units where within this range, I believe it's about 30, 30 feet by, by 50 to 60, it's still within the prefabricated unit. But also it can still offer where we take everything indoors and then we're getting into climate-controlled and using HX systems where we can truly control the moisture and temperature, and it can actually become a very experimental educational component of Collexico High School. And if you continue one more, Chris. And so then it, what you notice here is that the, the, the structure actually gets a little larger. And so in, in this scenario, we've, we're kind of departing from the prefabricated unit. And we say, okay, so if we're, if we're truly garner the support and we are invested in this effort, then why not go big? And so here it's, again, it becomes something that's state-of-the-art, and I'll show some examples at the end of this presentation, just so you get an idea. But in all, this guy's thinking, if, if, of course, it's, it's a difficult effort, right? And, and, and yes, there will be phasing, and of course, we need to find the funding for it. But I think with the help and with exposure to community, like you wouldn't be able to argue that this is a bad thing for, 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 for an educational system, especially one that's located in the valley. And so I think there's a lot of value, especially that it'd be the first of its precedent, and it's not occurring in the valley as, as we know it now. In Southwest, there is, there are, there is kind of these Eco Garden Clubs, but it's not as elaborate as we're proposing here. So if you continue, Chris. And so the thinking here, if you click once more in plan view now, is an overall just general comment, and, and, and we understand that the paving and the concrete surfaces are necessary because of the capacity of students that we have at Collexico High. But the thinking here was there's already a lot of construction happening at Collexico High. We live right by it, and we see the construction and new developments happening every day. And so we're, and while they're beautiful, we think that there's opportunities where our future developments really start to tie and create a network, almost like a greenbelt throughout campus. And so we start thinking of Collexico High as, as a true, true campus, something that you would see more in a university setting. We have the capacity for it. And then if you click on, Chris, this final image is kind of the pie in the sky, and we'll put it together quickly, just to give a sense of, of, of what, the scale of the structure, but also of how potentially beautiful it may be. And if you click once more. I think we may have missed a slide, but the idea is that we would have this, this structure, and they pulled this example of a case study. And the thinking is that ultimately what we're trying to achieve is something similar to this, in that it's everything that we discussed. It's art education, it's a laboratory, it's scientific, it's art in the, in the art of making cuisine. It's exposure to different species of plants. And if you keep clicking, Chris, but the reason why I show this example here is because I think it does a really good job, and of course, at a different scale, but they're using a much more simple structure. This is in climate-controlled, with the exception of if you look closely, that their unit is in fact insulated and it's climate-controlled. But I like the progression, as you would think, almost like a narrative, if you're inviting community members, or if it's an open house at Collexico High, or if it's tied to FFA, or you can imagine the different programs, the culinary. You start from the left, and it's kind of this plant nursery-type ornamental, it's beautiful, anyone can get behind that, right? And then we move into this more open floor where you have this outdoor table, it's a dining table, but then also it could be a workshop for students, perhaps partnerships between elementaries and high school and other, 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 other groups. And then you move to the middle where it starts getting more scientific and educational, and it's controlled, and it's measured, and there's data, and you're learning. And then at the far right, you begin to see, it's kind of faint, but you begin to see boards, and this is where you see community members kind of gathering around the mission statement of what this, the projects such as this seeks to achieve. And so I, I think it's quite beautiful and quite successful as a project, and I think if anything, whatever scale it becomes, following something along these lines, it ties to, to, to CalFresh, the efforts of Janessa and Chris, among others, and, and, and there are other groups that are kind of thinking of this, it's just a matter of bringing everyone together, that I think we can achieve something quite beautiful that will be, can truly be state-of-the-art within, within Collexico, even beyond just Collexico High School. And these last few images are just more examples, you can click through these, Chris, because I think we've shown enough, but it's, it's, it's these paths of kind of structures that are, are, are one that, one kind of productive in terms of economy, because there's plenty of plants, and I'm not proposing that we would. Maybe there's some plant sales days, UC Davis does it. And so the idea is that, that a mixture of all these different components will create a, ideally a very vibrant and, and, and a very smart, very fun and colorful environment that, that maybe is not, is not so much seen in Collexico, but, but I think a lot of people strive to, towards. And so we kind of end on this, or I don't know if you have any more slides, Chris, but I, I think we kind of end on this slide here. And the idea is, and please summarize, Chris, and include, but the ideal is here is that you could imagine that this kind of project, something that hasn't been seen in Collexico, maybe efforts have been attempted in the past, but that this would extend beyond Collexico High School and the, and the 130 by 30-foot plot. Maybe it's not there, maybe it's somewhere else. Thank you all. Sorry, I don't know if you want to comment, Chris?
No, I think, I think that's it. Our program seeks to implement policy systems and environmental changes within schools. If we can help with the school wellness policy, if we can help with the school food system or with actual physical environmental changes that help shape our students' behavior to nudge them towards healthier lifestyles, that's what we're all about. For every, every dollar that we, that the USDA invests in nutrition, education, and early age, we save lots of money in healthcare subsidies later on, to later age. And I wish we had students here to speak to you all, but maybe they can come back on another day to present to you guys again. But yeah, that's all we have to say. We've met with, so far with the FFA, with Mr. Gilbert Venegas, with the PU Department, we've met with Ms. Pedro with The Price, met with everybody except for maybe a couple of admin so far. And so this is just to update you all, and we'll have follow-up presentations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Matthew, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, that was H3 CalFresh Healthy Living, H4 COVID-19 protocols and procedures. Carlos.
Good evening, trustees. Long night, but we're gonna get through this. So I'm going to read this first part here, but for the rest of it, I'll, I'm not going to read the whole slide. I'll just highlight for you so you can get the gist of this. Please feel free to stop me. I'll ask for questions, but please feel free to stop me in the middle if you have specific questions or anything related to these. So this was a new, some new legislation that came out that we needed to put a plan in place or kind of just a little bit different structure with some different reporting and communication requirements that we've not had. I'll take this off while I'm up here, that we have, did not have prior to, to this, and we'll talk about that as we go here. So California Assembly Bill 685 requires employers to notify employees of COVID-19 close-contact exposures, which we've always done, and potential exposures, and develop a plan for identifying cases, notifying staff, and mitigating further COVID-19 spread in the workplace. Employees are required to make the plan available to their employees, which we did last Tuesday, sent it to every employee in the district. So authority and responsibility, the main pieces here is that as the superintendent, Mr. Carlos, Mr. Gonzalez has overall authority. However, the highlighted parts there, all managers and supervisors, oh, we can go to the next slide, please, sorry. All managers and supervisors are responsible for implementing and maintaining the CPP, the COVID-19 Prevention Program. That's that first underlined area. The second underlined area is that all employees are responsible for using safe work practices, following the directives, policies, and procedures in maintaining a safe environment. So we have to remind them sometimes of that. Next slide. Identification and evaluation of COVID-19 hazards. So the, I'm going to review number one and number five here. Number one is that we will conduct workplace-specific evaluations using the CPP Appendix A: Identification of COVID-19 Hazards forms. And you'll see a sample of that form on the next slide. But this is an important piece that we are, that we will be doing. We had an inspection component prior to this. This one's ramped up a little bit, and the recommendation is to include the employees' association representatives in the, in the inspection. So number five there says, "Conduct period inspections using the CPP Appendix B: Inspections Form as Needed to Identify Unhealthy Conditions, Work Practices, and Work Procedures." So that's just a continued part. So, thank you, perfect timing. Here are the dates, we're going to do these every four weeks, these inspections. The first one was due this week. It was a little bit challenging. Ms. Redona wanted to attend them, and then I think she possibly had some changes from what she said this evening. I wasn't aware of those, but she's meeting with them, I believe she's got some appointments for next week, to head out to the sites and analyze what kind of hazards may be in place at each site. We also, we're inviting ACT reps, however, many of the reps are not at the sites, and we're not, of course, forcing that or anything if they're uncomfortable to come to the site. We absolutely understand. But again, the employee reps are a key piece of these inspections, so that we're all in agreement. Next slide. Employee participation. This just discusses further that the employees and their authorized employee representatives are encouraged to participate in the identification and evaluation of COVID-19 hazards by participating in open dialogue, consistent sharing of concerns as they're discovered, jointly participating in site inspections, at least monthly, collaboratively discussing solutions. And that, just a little picture there is the Appendix B that addresses PPE and any needs that there may be. You'll see at the bottom, the no-touch thermal scanners for the temperature, if there's any issues with those, which we've had a few here and there that we're working on. So that inspection report is important. Next slide, please. There we go, employee-student screening. Procedures to screen employees. These are important here. So the first one there is the use of a mobile app that we're working with frontline that will be on phones, and the results will go right into our frontline attendance system and alert site principals or a building supervisor, so that they know if anybody has screened out as soon as possible. Right now, we've, we expect all employees to self-screen for COVID symptoms before entering the workplace, and that is with the document to the right of that. Those are the usual questions per the CDC on symptoms, temperature, family members that have COVID, et cetera, that would screen someone out from coming into work. And then we also, number three there, we're expected, employees are expected to enter the workplace with their face coverings and complete the non-contact temperature screening at or near the entrance of where they come to work. So the next one, correction of COVID-19 hazards. This is just still more part of that, looking at the hazards, and they will send those appendix, appendices that we talked about, A and B, to this email, covid@cusdk12. This is an email that is sent to all of executive cabinet, along with Olivia Nunez and Christina Lopez in HR. They handle these things right away. The last little part there in italics, site department supervisors will be responsible for follow-up actions to resolve unsafe or unhealthy work conditions, practices, or procedures within their side or department. So they will send these to us, we will see them immediately. One of the emails is Mr. Chris Delarosa, to be able to look at those really quick, to be able to analyze the urgency of some of these needs. So those have been coming in recently, and we're in the process of addressing any of the needs at sites. I would say there isn't anything that's too much of a huge surprise right now, but I've urged principals and everyone else to, you know, if there is something that they missed earlier and they see now, please, you know, don't hesitate to make sure they tell us in the, in the, you know, efforts to keep everybody safe. So then we get into the control of the hazards. We'll go over physical distancing, face coverings, and engineering controls. So for physical distancing, we have a picture here of mains and some of the barriers that were installed. There's four different aspects of this about teleworking during extreme conditions. We started this after Thanksgiving. All sites and departments, I'm reading from number three, have been limited to one person per office in addition to the site and department supervisor. And I would add that we have run that plan and are, the, the new situation through the county health department. We've, you know, in the ideal setting, even a grounds person or custodian, or these one, one staff person coming per office, if they're parking their car, coming in, scanning, going to their workstation, we've urged them not to go off-campus for lunch, to bring their food, do their shift, eat there, whether it's four hours or the, or the full day, and then back to their car, using the restroom at the, at the site, back to their car and home, that they should be able to, to stay safe. So unfortunately, we have had some people that are following that, but in between work shifts, they're out and about, and they, they do get exposed still. So it's not foolproof, obviously, but we limited these, the work, the workforce intentionally to limit exposures. So, next slide, please. Face coverings. We provide face coverings with all the PPE as needed. We remind everybody to, all the sites, to order extra so that they have it for anyone who comes along. I was at a site this week, and they said, gosh, we've had parents just get right out of their car and come walking up, and they forgot a mask, forgot it at home, they don't have anything. So our masks and all the PPE is available for parents and the public that are coming up as well to the, to the sites. So our masks and all the PPE is available for parents and the public that are coming up as well to the, to the sites. We, the underlying part there about staff members, parents, and members of the public are not allowed into any district buildings without an appropriate face covering. However, anyone may ask for a face covering at any district facility, and one will be provided for them. So the point of that is not to be exclusionary, but to just remind everybody to take precautions, and we'll provide a mask if needed. So here's a picture of Mr. Miramon at Jefferson, working away with his mask on, cleaning up. Going, moving down there, engineering controls. As you've heard, with the HVAC systems, we have HEPA filters, and we've also added the additional plasma pure air purifiers. I think I brought a sample of the box last meeting, or the meeting before, to show you that. It's a technology called needlepoint bipolar ionization. Basically, that, that graphic there shows the pollutants with the two, I don't know, objects there that are emitting the red and the blue, they're positive and negative ions, and when they bond with the pollutants, it creates water vapor, which neutralizes everything. So the pollutants aren't, aren't there for any of those that are getting through the HEPA filter. So very effective system. Next slide. Cleaning and disinfecting. You've seen this machine tonight, coming in and out here. So the main thing with this machine and the technology there is that we use the EPA List N disinfectants for this, or we use the bleach solutions that are appropriately diluted to remain in contact with the surface for the proper kill time or dwell time. I know Mr. De La Rosa made some efforts in the very beginning to, we had some chemicals that had a little bit longer kill time. I don't remember how many seconds, but it was a lot, and Mr. De La Rosa worked to find some chemicals that had a shorter kill time, that were still as effective, because when they're going in and disinfecting, time is of the essence, the sites, the DO, wherever we are. So there's many times that I'll call Chris, sometimes late in the evening, to say, "We just had an exposure this site. We'll need you to take care of that in the morning," and he gets a crew there that just handles it. So it's been really, really helpful. The next one there, hand sanitizing. Next, thank you there. This is a video that we have as part of the beginning of the year training, really emphasizes the 20 seconds, and it goes over some details of what happens if you just wash for five or 10 seconds. It shows what germs are left on your hands with the, I don't know, black light or something. So really emphasizes that for our training. In our actual CPP, all these links are active, of course, for all the trainings, all the links for the ionization machine, or the ionization filters. It shows that process in a little video, and so our staff can be well aware of the technology that's being used as well. Moving to the next slide, PPE. Again, these are some, several videos you'll see underlying there. At the bottom, the, can you see that? Looks like that's cut off a little bit. Yeah, it's a little bit cut off there, but there's PPE, putting it on, taking it off, improving the fit of your, and improving the fit of your face mask. Oh, you know what? It's like highlighted, and it's in the same color there, so you can't really see it. But again, these are trainings that we provided through Keenan for our staff upon their return to school this year. Next slide. So this is one of the most important slides here. These, there are a couple new aspects of the, with the AB685 that are noted on this slide. So the first, number one there is determine the working area that constitutes the exposed workplace of the COVID-19 case. So if it's someone that's working in a, in the attendance office, obviously, that, that office would need to be closed down to get cleaned, disinfected. Then number two, we determine everyone who was on the exposed workplace premises during the COVID-19 cases infectious period. This has been a little bit more challenging than we thought as we were preparing this document. We, as you heard, we've had people coming in out of the district office sometimes to drop off time cards, those kind of things, but we didn't have a way of knowing they would come in and drop off, "Hi, thank you, goodbye," and be on their way. We didn't have a system to know if we had to go back to Monday, who was in the district office. So we worked with IATA, our receptionist, and then did some mass communication out to everybody, letting them know that if you're coming to the district office for any reason, if you're coming off for time cards, those go in the drop box. If you need to work on something here, you contact IATA with, so that she can write down the time and date that you're here. So we have a sheet that IATA keeps, a page for every day, of anyone that's coming through the doors. So we sent directives to all the buildings, that no one just lets people in for the closed facilities, like FRC, district office, even school sites. No one, you know, if you see a parent wandering around, you don't just go, "Oh, let me help you in the, into the building." So we, we also emphasized in the communication that we're not trying to be, we're still wanting to be very customer-friendly and helping our clients, our, our parents and our community, but just in the name of safety. So this form, so getting down to number three, determine those individuals who were in close contact with the COVID-19 case. That's something that we've always done. They have to leave school immediately. We recommend they talk to their doctors, usually get a test right away. And the third, the, the next step here after number three, it's not written here, but you'll see a sample on the right of that form, is that we're required to notify the employee's representative, and this is a confidential memorandum that we send each day. So we'll send one to ACT and CSEA with a list of their members who are either, who either tested positive or were close contacts. And so that they're aware of their members. So that's an important piece. The other piece here that, that we hadn't done before is to what they call potentially exposed. So for example, at the district office, since the restrooms are used for, for female restrooms there, we would, if we had a female who was positive, we would notify all of the females for sure. If that individual had walked in different offices that day, and we find that out by talking with them during contact tracing, then we would just notify the whole facility, which we've had to do a couple times so far, where we send an email to the, all of the staff at the district office, let them know that they were, have been potentially exposed. It does not mean that they're required to see a doctor, or get tested, or go home. It just is letting them know that there is the potential that they had an exposure there. So that is an extra layer. When we did that initially, it caused, it still causes some concern. People say, "Oh, my gosh," and they'll email us back, "What does this mean? Do I have to go see a doctor? Or I have to leave right now? What do I have to do?" And we reassure them, "No, it just means that you're a potential exposure. It means you were in the vicinity. You were not a close contact. It's not recommended to be tested by the CDC or the county health department. It's just to notify you that you were potentially exposed, quote unquote." Next one here is testing sites. So if you are a close contact, or if we get into an outbreak situation, where there are three cases within a 14-day period, for example, if it's a district officer, let's say the FRC this time, there's, say we have three within a 14-day period, we have to shut the whole facility down. Once we get the third case, send everyone to get tested at one of these locations. So there's three locations. The fourth one is the OptumServe testing sites, and there's a link there that gets to the website, which is on the right there, that lists several other facilities, and they're updating that probably every week or two, as those facilities change. But we have to provide, one of the requirements is that employees can go to one of these sites. Their testing is free, and they have to be able to do it during work time. So they'll go and do a test. We'll see who's positive out of the whole building. They'll go home. They don't go back to the work site. The work site is obviously disinfected. They'll do another test in a week, and we'll see who's positive then. Could be more, could be less, but then they'll do weekly tests until everyone is negative for COVID for 14 days. Then the site can be reopened per AB685. So it's quite a lengthy process. So we're hoping that, that doesn't happen, but it is very possible. Okay, questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And it's five slides back.
Oh, sorry.
How many of those little machines that were brought in today to disinfect, do we have?
Oh, I don't know. Do you know the exact number, Chris?
We purchased 13 of that type of machine.
Oh, okay.
And then we purchased other electric sprayers, handhelds, and we purchased one for each disposal.
Okay, so we do have them. Since when? Since when?
When the outbreak started, we, we purchased the machine in the Saturday. And originally, we purchased four, because they were hard to come back. Then they, then they became more available as time went on. We were able to purchase, finish purchasing, so we could have one in each site. The handhelds, we ordered those back in October, and, and we just received them right before the Christmas break. So they've been tagged, and next week, they're gonna be given to each disposal.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for that question. Any other questions, clarifications? I know it's late. I apologize. So there we go, exclusion of a COVID case. This is probably the second most important slide here, at least to the staff. This is a huge change from FF-CRA, where we had the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act, where they had 80 hours of leave. Now, when we have to send someone home, there, we don't have those leave provisions specifically through FF-CRA. So there, the, the AB685 says that the earnings, seniority, and all other rights and benefits will continue to be maintained whenever we've demonstrated that the COVID-19 exposure is work-related. So basically, what this means, the next paragraph says that they'll get up to 12 weeks of leave pursuant to the Family Medical Leave Act and the California Family Rights Act, which is, is something that we've, we've used. That's, those aren't new provisions, FMLA and CFRA. You may have heard of those. Exclusions may apply if prior FMLA, CFRA, or FF-CRA leaves were utilized within the previous 12 months. So this is all well and good, and you can qualify for FMLA if you haven't used it for 12 months. And so some of our employees, maybe they had a, a sick child. They went out on FF-CRA with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, and had to be with their kids for six weeks or seven weeks. And needed to, so they were getting paid two-thirds of their pay during that time, and they were able to supplement the other third with sick leave or vacation, but they used some of their time. So if they used six weeks, then they only have six weeks left now, because the rules with FMLA is that it's 12 weeks in any one calendar year, one, one, one year from the time you first used it to the time you might need it again. So there has to be 12 months passed. So that's not a, an easy situation. And then the key piece in that first paragraph is that the COVID-19 exposure is work-related. So we have had recently this week, people who have not been at work, but can't work, can't teach from home, can't telework. They got their exposure somewhere because they hadn't been at work, so they're home, but their, their, all these different earnings, seniority, and all those things aren't able to stay intact as far as they'll have to use their sick time, which is, all the employees are entitled to use that. But if this exposure happened at work, when they run out of sick leave, the district would pay, so that they would keep them whole. They would not have any deductions. However, if the exposure is not work-related, they will get deducted, they will have payroll deductions in that situation. And that's, you know, we're pretty, you can't determine if someone's at work, if they technically got it here or not, but you can determine that when they haven't even been at work for several weeks, and then they're, they're positive. So that's rare right now in the cases that we've had since we came back, but we do have one now, where the person had not been on campus at all, they're positive, they're needing to take extra time, and it's not, not able to be paid by the district. So we're hopeful that maybe by the end of the month, with a new, new, some new national leadership, that there may be some other leave provisions, but right now, there is not. So any questions about that? It's a little bit tricky, especially because it's regarding FMLA and CFRA, which are continuous from the previous leaves. Okay, let's move to the next slide. We're getting to the end here. Reporting, record-keeping, and access. We've talked about some of these communication pieces. We also have reporting requirements, where we have to report to the local health department. We have to report to OSHA. We do that through Keenan. Keenan has set up a website that where we'll submit our, our information there, and it goes to OSHA. And then number four there says, "Make our written CPP, COVID-19 Prevention Program, available at the workplace to employees, employees' representatives, and representatives of the CalOSHA immediately upon request." So rather than wait for those requests, we sent those out, sent the plan out to everybody immediately. I think it was Tuesday. And we also send it along when we're doing notifications as well, so people are familiar with that as much as possible. Return to work conditions. These have not changed. You'll see at least 24 hours have passed since the fever has resolved without, without medicines. Next slide, please, sorry. So 24 hours have passed without a fever. Number two, the symptoms, the COVID-19 symptoms have improved. And number three, at least 14 days have passed since the COVID-19 symptoms first appeared. So that was for symptomatic people. The next paragraph there is for people who did not ever develop symptoms, so they can return to work, can't work to work until, return to work until a minimum of 14 days have passed since the date of their test for their COVID specimen collection. So 14 days is still that magic number, and we have had a number of employees that tested early on. If they were exposed and were negative, very frustrated, they had to stay home. "I feel great. Come on. Why are you keeping me home?" And then day 13, they'll call and say, "Man, I feel like a truck hit me," and sure enough, they'll be positive right at the end of that cycle. So those days are, are important. So, next slide is the end. Questions? I went through that pretty quickly. This is a summary. There's some more details in the actual plan, but this summarizes the AB685 and some of the OSHA requirements that have come out that all employers are required to follow.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Jay, information items. I know that we have all these, but we have, for the first time, we have added three new reports. But we have here Mr. Chris De La Rosa, J6. Would you mind if, or would you mind if we move J6 to the top, so Mr. Chris De La Rosa can go first?
No, go ahead.
Yep?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. I have a PowerPoint. I'll go really quick. Okay. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to provide you, the board of directors, an opportunity to, to give you an update on maintenance operations. Thank you. Okay, and the slide that you see up on the screen, the bullet points, they identify some of the things that we've been doing for COVID-19-related projects. Now, these are projects that, that we've done in anticipation of, in preparing for the children to return to, to school in the safest possible environment, considering the pandemic. We, we had, we, the installation of hand wash stations centers at school sites in support of classrooms that do not have a sink, modular classrooms, for example. They do not have a, a sink in their classrooms, like, like the permanent building classrooms do. So to prevent the overcrowding of restrooms, we, we identified locations throughout the campuses that were close to the portable trailers, and they had infrastructure on the other side that we could tap into, drains, water, and, and we, we started installing single-use, knee-operated, so you don't have to touch, use it with your hands, knee-operated hand wash sinks, okay? They, we've already completed- They, we've already completed Enrique Camarena, which is all modulators. Jefferson Elementary, which has a good, healthy number of modulators. Dual School, that has a good, healthy number of modulators. It's our oldest school, actually. So we're able to, to, and now we started Rockwood School, okay? So, we've, we're able to construct what we call bump outs. Bump outs, and you'll see pictures of them in a couple of slides, okay? And we're able to also retrofit bottle fillers on some of the sites, on some of those hand wash stations, like at Jefferson, and you'll see slides of those too, and Enrique Camarena, okay? Plexiglass barriers for workstations, and the installation fabrication of permanent tempered glass service windows for points of public service. Now that was an item initiated by M and O, and that's, the Plexiglass is what everybody is used to saying. And when you see Plexiglass, you think of these little plastic type of barriers. But we were thinking, long-term, we were thinking, if this COVID nineteen pandemic is gonna do anything, it's gonna raise the emphasis on hygiene moving forward. So the kids going through this now, the emphasis of washing your hands, and, and those type of things are gonna, are gonna live with them forever, okay? So we wanted to provide permanent glass service windows, some with voice boxes, some with openings so that they could pass items back and forth. And not only does it protect them from direct droplets, it also protects them in the security sense as well. Because it's not as easy to hop over the counter as it would have been for any unfortunate type of situation. So, so offices are actually safer with these type of installations, the permanent installations. But we also are doing Plexiglass on other areas that, that seem temporary, that have a high likelihood of, of not lasting very long. We still have some sites pending, you know, and for the most part, the initial order has been completed. But, but we've had sites reach out to us and say, "Oh, we forgot this area. Can we do something here?" Like libraries, for example, Willie Moreno Library, we're gonna install it because that's gonna be a big point of contact for students. Jefferson's Nurses Office, they requested one. Caesar Chavez Library, Dual School's Nurses Office, and Aurora High School. Aurora High School reached out about converting existing windows to windows that can open, okay? To promote air circulation and fresh air intake. They requested that, and we thought it was a great idea. And, and with Mr. Vega's support, we got behind it, and so we've already ordered materials for that, so it's gonna be good. Installed and procured a procedure. We installed a procedure that requires custodians to confirm via email that they completed their assigned cleaning and disinfecting routes at the end of the day. This is very important, because it's important that we get a confirmation from the custodian that the areas they're assigned were indeed disinfected. And it's all about ownership, it's all about accountability. During the normal school year, there's classroom check logs that the custodian must, must acknowledge of the service that were performed in that classroom. So this is a good thing for us. It makes decisions quicker when it comes to potential exposure. We were able to determine whether an area has been disinfected or not quickly. So that's, that's good stuff. Sometimes you have to remind them, but for the most part, everybody's participating pretty well. Okay. The installation of hand sanitizers in all classrooms and common areas throughout CUSD facilities. Not only did we do that, we also converted our hand sanitizer system to a system that allows us to make our own. It's a, we buy a concentrated model, and we have a dilution system, and it allows us to refill our bottles as needed. So we're saving a lot of money there. A reinforcement of existing custodial standards and expectations. That, board members, is one of the first things that we did when the COVID broke out. We called in all the custodians and sat them down, and we went over their existing procedures. And then we emphasized, because there were some doubts in there, how are they supposed to clean now? They're supposed to clean the same as they, as they used to. Those procedures have always been there. So we just reemphasized it, and we gave them a refresher on the procedures that they're supposed to follow. We had a good system in place, and it's been in place for many years. As we mentioned earlier, the mass disinfection devices that, that we discussed a little while ago. We finally have them all, and next week, all the custodians will have their handhelds. PPE materials, disinfectant, hand sanitizers, dispensers, all of that we procured, and we're safeguarding or storing in refrigerated containers here at the Felipe Vega facility. And I'll show you a picture of those in a second. At Caesar Chavez, we replaced the original playground water fountains with four new ADA-compliant bottle filler pedestals. Now, that was a playground that didn't have any cool water. Didn't have cool water, because there was no electrical out in the playground. It was just regular temperature water. So they were not used very much by the students. They would go into, towards the buildings, and they would use those, those fountains there, creating a crowd. So now with the elimination of mouth-to-bib water fountains, we're emphasizing bottle fillers at this point, so we opted to swap those out. And with your, an approval at a previous meeting, we had an electric company come in and run power out, out to that area. So now, today, tomorrow, almost today, but tomorrow, hopefully it'll be done. The last bolts will be, will be tightened, and the electrician can energize the water chiller. And hopefully that'll be done and done, okay? Retrofitting installation of bottle fill stations, that, what I just mentioned was the mouth-to-spout. So we have an existing water fountain. We're turning off the mouth-to-spout bib, and the fountain is being retrofitted with a bottle filler. Same chilled water that the kids were getting before, but now it's a bottle service. And when the pandemic subsides, and we go back to normal, we can reintroduce the bibs, and, or re-energize the bibs, and we'll be able to have bottle filler and bibs. The widening of a problematic walkway at CHS. We had an area there in front of the welding, if you're familiar with that area, and it would bottleneck. And many times I stood, and there was a fence there that the welding class made. And many times I was in that area, and I watched the kids bottleneck in there, almost shoulder to shoulder, walking down the sidewalk. So to alleviate that type of crowding, we extended sidewalk a few feet on both sides to create a wider sidewalk. I think, the top of my head, I'd like to say it's about a twelve-foot sidewalk now. So that cut into a little bit of the project that the young men presented, but I gave them fair warning first when they approached. I told them, "We're gonna extend the sidewalk." So that came out okay. Air purifiers. So we ordered air purifiers. We've received some. It's a large order. It's a thousand units that we ordered. And a hundred and twenty devices have been installed at sites, District Office, there Felipe Vega, Kennedy Gardens is done, Aurora High School is done, and the new FRC is done as of today. All the sites are pending, and we're knocking them out one at a time, okay? Because I think, we think, we're not getting them all a thousand right now. We're getting whatever we can from the vendor, and Mr. Ocampo is putting them in himself. We installed electrical infrastructure for the current Borderlink antenna located at Willie Moreno. It's one of the first things we did when the pandemic hit. A good thing Technology Department was, was on point, and it made it easy for us to, to go in there and help them out to establish power for that antenna. Provided storage containers. You'll see storage containers all throughout the district. And those storage containers are to eliminate un, excess furniture, to eliminate hard surfaces, because hard surfaces are what you need to disinfect. So if we were to come back in a model program of twelve desks, ten desks per classroom, we were gonna have an excess of twenty desks, fifteen desks. So we provided containers so that, so that schools can, can store their furniture without it getting weather damaged and damage to the elements. So that's worked out well. Fabrication of carriages for the, purchased the body scanners. So we bought those body scanners that we've seen as we enter our schools, but they, they weren't the best to move around. So we fabricated there with staff some carriages for them, like a dolly, if you will. And where it makes those scanners portable, more portable, one-man portable, and more versatile for sites like the high school where they can move them around, different sites, different areas, as needed. So it worked out real well. El Centro Elementary asked us for the design, just kind of toot our own horn. And, and we passed it on to them. Okay, so here are pictures of Jefferson Elementary, the hand wash stations. You can see the one on the right is out in the playground. The one on the left is, is off of, we brought the water from the restroom and, and the sewer as well. That's Caesar Chavez. Those are what the four new water fountains look like. Hand wash stations at Duel. That's kindergarten, when you turn the corner. And then those are off the existing Duel buildings. Duel School, the new restroom that you guys approved, and recently, the new faculty restrooms. We were able to get the infrastructure from there and put four sinks there, and they're all six and over feet apart. You don't see hand towel dispensers and soap dispensers yet until we know when the students are coming back, because they're made out of plastic, and we don't want to put them out in the elements just yet. And the one on the right is an existing playground fountain, and right on top of it, you can see the bottle filler retrofit. These are the containers, refrigerated containers at the warehouse, and this is where we're safeguarding the majority of the PPE. This is our shots of, I took shots of the warehouse today. Just, most of the stuff there is PPE-type materials, hand sanitizers, disinfectants, rubber gloves, and we're well-stocked right now. Okay, district-wide projects. This has been so long since we had an opportunity to address the board. That's why there's so much. You know, we did, these are, these are not COVID-related projects, okay? We've done installations of informational marquees, Jefferson, Blanche Charles, FRC.
Where, where did you put the one at Jefferson? Is it high or is it low?
It's right in front. It's the little short one that was mentioned here one time. It's not very tall. It's about eight feet. So we had to try to build a little pedestal for it to raise it up over the pony fence.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was a DSA issue.
Okay.
And, and then at CHS nine, there's another small one, but we were able to put it up on a hill and build a little, build it up a foot. But Blanche Charles, they got a full-blown, tall one, real nice, and so did the new FRC. And we did those installs ourselves. So the district bought the signs, and we did the installs ourselves with our electrician and our skill maintenance workers. The installation and building of new irrigation pumps, long overdue at Blanche Charles slash Aurora, because they share the same irrigation system and mains. Those were, we, something we've been wanting to do a long time, and that was the work that was being performed while the majority of the district was shut down, and we only had a small crew of employees here. Completion of the renovation of student restrooms at Rockwood Elementary, those are finally done. I mean, we tackled that project ourselves. And yeah, it took a while. First we started with Kinder Restrooms, then we did two of the intermediate, and then we finally finished with two of the primary. They look great, and you'll see a picture of them. And they're long overdue, Rockwood School. If, I think Mr. Calderon Ciro had visited there a couple of years ago and had, had seen that they were still in their original state at that time. So the renovation of interior flooring, interior paint at District Office, so the hallway and everything that was done here, we did it in-house here at Maintenance Operations. And it was challenging because of COVID was ripping roaring at that time. So we had to make sure that, that staff wasn't working on top of each other. And that required tear out of the existing floor, and doing everything that you see out there. I think the guys did a great job.
Chris, can you give me one second? A motion to extend the meeting on to twelve thirty.
Motion to approve till...
Alright, second by Mr. Calderon Junior. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. No abstentions. Thank, sorry, sorry, Chris. Continue.
The, the new exterior painting at the new FRC, I mean, we had a new renovation there in the, in the original building. And we wanted to, to give the rest of the site a facelift. So we changed the color scheme and put a new, fresh coat of paint. I think the guys did a great job. It was the middle of summer, and they did a great job out there. It looks good right now. The relocation of existing supply line at Enrique Camarena. That was a tough, tough project. It was very challenging. And it was in support of the new parking lot that was approved by this board to, for Pyramid to install. So if we would have left it there, we would have had an irrigation line right under the southern side of the parking lot. And, and the existing line had already several breaks. So we decided to move it outside of the parking lot, on the southern side, near the retention base, and swing around to the field. So that was a very challenging project, and we did that in-house. The guys were very successful. Installation of a new chain link fence for students' safety at Duel School Kinder. Duel School Kinder, Duel School has a trailer that was outside their little Duel School compound. So the principal approached, approached me and asked if we could put a couple of sections of fence to enclose that trailer and incorporate it into the Kinder compound. So, so we priced it out and material-wise, and we did the work ourselves. And it was good. It's gonna provide all the kindergartners a safer environment. And then right now, Room fifty-three Duel School, our, one of our carpenters, actually the gentleman who remodeled Rockwood's restrooms, has pulled out the cabinets, and he's fabricating new cabinets and countertops for, for that classroom. If time permits, once he's done there, we'd like to move to another classroom. We've done already, I think, three classrooms at Duel over the last couple of years, and the Nurses Office. We've done already, I think, uh, three classrooms at Dole over the last couple of years and the nurses' office. So, um, we'd like to, to, um, start tackling those older, um, counters and cabinets. And so, uh, once it's all said and done, we'll provide pictures so you guys can see it. So this is the, the restrooms at Rockwood look like, they're great, uh, just, we just need kids in it. Okay, that's all I have, uh, for that. Um, the other part of this, sorry. Is the custodians, the critical services of the custodians. Um, it goes, uh, there's no words that, that measure, um, the services that, that these guys are providing. These guys are, 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 are giving the peace of mind to everybody who's coming to work in the morning that the site is, is clean and disinfected. Um, so we, uh, we'd like to, to just, you know, commend them for their, for their work that they've been doing. And, um, when there's an outbreak, those are the guys that, that get sent in, um, to, to make sure that it's safe for everybody. So they've been doing a very, very good job. We've had our setbacks sometimes, you know, uh, people get quarantined and then so we have to fill the gaps. Uh, Personnel Commission has done a good job of, uh, providing the substitutes as needed. And then we've had a lot of movement, we've had a lot of, um, movement, uh, positions, okay? Um, the maintenance staff has been challenged with, you know, several mandatory quarantines incidents. You know, although the majority of staff has followed, um, the guidelines. I, that's the whole maintenance oper- uh, umbrella. The majority has followed the guidelines that have been put in place since we were the, one of the only groups, uh, here working. Um, that being said, the, this, um, COVID nineteen is, is bad. And, um, we recently lost, um, one of our coworkers, one of our brothers in arms, if you will. Uh, gentleman that I worked with for, for many years and Caesar Chavez. And, and I'd like to think that I was one of the, one of the people that, that mentored him when he was here. Um, wonderful, wonderful person. Um, John Gonzalez. So John Gonzalez is gonna live in our memories forever and we're gonna miss him very, very much. Um, but it, it made it hit home for, for our department. That was one of our own. And, and we had been lucky not to, not to be, ha- have been affected closely a- as, as this, here, especially here at work. And, um, and, um, right now it hit home. So, so when Ms. Redona, uh, goes on her speech and she mentions, what she mentioned about the feelings of, of, of the MNO team, um, she's, she's right. The overall sentiment is, staff wants to know, why can't we come up with a plan to reduce the amount of exposure? Um, they've come into my office many, many times and we, we, we discuss it. I don't blow anybody off and we discuss it and, and we talk about, uh, options because I want them to, to be able to consider all sides. To be able to consider the service side, the importance of keeping the district open five days and the business aspect. So, that being said, there is room, in my opinion, and that, my opinion is based off of my experience here, um, in the district. There is room to, to, to find a, a, a compromise of some kind, to keep business going, to still be effective. Uh, but we have to sit down, we need to plan, discuss, and, um, and at least start the discussions in, in, um, planning a, a scenario where, where staff can, can spend more time sheltering place and sheltering placing just as recommended and, and trying to keep themselves safe until we're all vaccinated and, and, um, we, we, we march into the next levels, you know? Uh, the good levels, not the bad ones, so. Um, that was my, that was my update. I really appreciate the opportunity. Whether I give the next update or not, it remains to be seen. But I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come and address the board. I had mentioned to Mr. Calderon that, that I was, I'm attempting to bring us out of the dark and into the light because sometimes we, we become the, the forgotten department or the, the, I don't like, I don't wanna use the term taken for granted, you know, but, but it's the forgotten department. Me hold it, uh, beach, and, um, and we want to, um, we wanna just share our accomplishments, um, and, and with, with everybody. And we'd, we'd like, you know, you guys to share with everybody our accomplishments as well. So, um, we're very proud of each other, uh, we have a tight group, but they're very, very concerned, okay? That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you wanna talk about?
You know, any questions about any of our department, feel free to call me, to ask me, you can ask me right now. You know, it's a good time. Um, and like I, like I tell you, I'll tell you straight, shoot, I mean, I'll shoot you straight and, but whatever you guys need to know, wanna know fast, I'll give it to you as quickly and as accurately as possible.
Chris, can we talk about, uh, security issues, uh, at the high school? The two recent one and also the robotics, Mr.?
The robotics, I guess somebody reported, uh, some missing equipment there at the robotics classroom at the ninth grade academy?
Yeah, I wasn't made aware of it, uh, by Mr. Vega. I, I wasn't, uh, called or brought in the loop when, when that incident happened. So, um, I think Ms. Ms. Williams, uh, handled that in, in, in the initial stages and, and, um, but they, nobody reached out to tell us. Normally they will reach out, especially if there's a break-in, uh, so, so we can do two things. One, you can see, uh, do an initial, uh, walk of it and see how they got in, and then the other is to go and repair whatever was broken. But, and then, you know, um, the principal or myself, whoever gets there first, will call the police, have a report made. Then we'll, we'll, there will be some inventory of items, but we weren't brought into the loop on that, on that particular incident.
And in the recent, uh, break-in, Chris?
Recently, the first one that happened was, I wanna say December twelfth, uh, and it was that week, cause I, I know Carlos on vacation. And, um, one of our employees noticed that the fence had been breached. And then when he started, when he started, uh, walking around, he noticed the cabinet that had been broken into. Well, as he followed, followed the path or the trail, footprints and what have you, uh, he noticed that they, they had broken into the, the FFA livestock area. And, um, they broke into a cabinet. So, uh, police report was made, I came, I came in and, um, we did a police report, I got statements from the staff and, and then, um, with Mr. Vega's approval, we, we decided to, um, put a standing guard there, um, for, 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 from the protect, Patrol Protective Services. Cause we were going into the winter break, that was the last week and going into winter break. So, um, it was gonna be kind of, it was al- almost gonna be alone. So, um, we put a standing guard there and we had no incidents at that time. But when we came back, uh, got a call from Mr. Palacio at Calixco High School. And, um, he found the whole, the, the perimeter fence breached again. Uh, tools laying on the ground, um, garden tools. And then, so we, we, we went into investigation mode and, and called the police. And, uh, turns out they, they had broken into, uh, into, uh, one, two, three, four storage sheds. And, um, and they had, uh, taken, according to the teacher, when he did his inventory, he had, they had taken a welder, a wagon with some, some tool, F, uh, ag tools, uh, as far as I know right now. Um, we did, with the help of Mr. Eduardo Perez, um, we did, um, check our surveillance. There is a camera there and it hangs on the, on the southeast corner of the auto shop. And, and we tried to see if we could see, um, any, any bodies, uh, or anybody coming into the frame because it would've been directly across, maybe a hundred, a hundred, twenty feet away. And, um, we, we weren't able to see anybody. But the alarm, the alarming part, and I don't wanna laugh because it's disturbing. But the alarming part is, and I reported to Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Vega, is that, um, we didn't see any security, security personnel come into the frame either. Now, it's right near a door. If you're checking that area, in my opinion, and you're checking it correctly, you would come in the frame. Cause what comes in the frame are custodians right before they leave, custodians taking the carts out when, when they arrive, a few cats. But the security guard never came into the frame. So I reported that as being, as being, um, uh, disturbing and, and something, so we, we requested the, the logs. And I think, uh, one of our members requested a log, right, as well, so?
Yeah.
So, when, when we saw logs and we seen that it says checks all the doors and checks all, secures all the gates, we would've seen the security guard in the frame. So it's my opinion that the security guard on duty during that, that intrusion, didn't, didn't check that area. That's my opinion.
Yeah, correct.
That's based off camera footage or lack of camera footage.
Yeah, and that's why I asked for that, that log, cause I, I think it's very important, you know, especially right now that we have security going around, they should've caught that, you know?
I did call the owner and I told him that we're definitely gonna be addressing that. Um, and I've been talking, discussing with Mr. Mr. Vega as to when. And, and, and it's really, Mr. Vega's gonna take the lead when it comes to, to dealing with that lack of service. Okay? Um, what I do wanna do is I wanna go back to the other cameras because it's, they're all over the site now and see if we can't see anymore, any act, any activity from security. Cause I know I can check the cameras at, at, at our shop and I, and I'll see them come into the frame. You know, I just push, but, put playback and it's mostly cats and, and security officers. Okay, so that, that's the information that I have for that. Um, we did identify dark areas, especially north of the, of the woodshop. And we're gonna be fabricating, we have to fabricate the, the, the bracket for it. But we're gonna be fabricating and, and repurposing some of the lights that we took off of No Name, the ones that used to be on No Name, but we, we, we salvaged them. And we're gonna repurpose those there, some big bright lights and try to address all the dark spots. Um, the other recommendation that I gave, uh, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Vega was, was to put additional cameras, there's blind spots out there. So we need to, um, invest in, in more cameras. Hopefully the, the system can support more cameras out that way. And, um, but, but I do recommend that, that we, we do get some better, some more surveillance out there cause we do have some blind spots. Okay?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris.
And, and, and just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, for the record, we have, uh, process with insurance. So I know that, that deductible for insurance claims when it comes to burglary is five thousand dollars. So if, whatever it is provided in terms of what's been lost, if it doesn't get to that threshold or above, you know, basically, you know, we have to recover the items ourselves. So, so, I mean, we do have insurance, but on the, uh, first claim, the one, the first in December, uh, that one was nowhere near five thousand dollars in losses. So that claim, you know, is gonna be just, uh, closed without any type of repayment. Uh, we're still in the middle of the latest one, we're still in the middle of that one. So I know that part of the requirement is whenever that happens, uh, board, the principals know that the first thing they gotta do is call the police and report it to MNO. Uh, I put together a business manual and that business manual, there are processes and procedures in there that, you know, it's in writing, you know, and it says there that whenever something like that happens, you know, we need to right away report it. And, uh, you know, we need a list of items that have been taken so that we can open insurance claims, because, I mean, that, that's what they're for. So that's the process, so every principal now is aware of that process. So they cannot come back later and say, well, what do I do or what am I, you know, what are the next steps? It's very clear in there, so just wanted to, you know, bring that up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, hey, I, I'd like to make a motion that the rest of the information items that we, uh, tabled and,
Yeah.
otherwise we're not gonna get out of here.
Oh, no, I, I was gonna say that, so.
And I'll second that.
Yeah. So, okay, so, let's see, yeah, let's see, let's see, yes, okay, that's fine. Uh, so, we can leave, we can leave the information items, Mr. Gonzalez, for the next meeting. Unless there's something pre- super pressing that you need to talk about in Measure V? Super pressing?
No, we can table.
Okay, thank you.
And can we also table the, uh, discussion items, uh, for our next meeting also as well, Kay?
Okay, yes, and I was gonna get to that, Kay? Yes, we can, we can do them later. Item L, um, I, I was the one that brought ba- brought the accounts payable free list and the, uh, the high school possessions for the fine arts. Uh, Ms. Magallanes, do you mind if we, uh, table the financial literacy class and the nutrition education class for the next meeting?
Yes, it's fine.
Thank you. So we got, we start with that. Uh, item M, action items consideration and action approval.
Yep. Can I, can I also make another suggestion?
Sure.
I mean, cause we added, what, three updates? Can we, like, alternate the?
Well, the updates, uh, 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 going back to ma- to Jay, the updates on ACES migrant, uh, 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 the migrant and, and the, uh, maintenance and operations. Uh, since this was the first time that, uh, that, uh, maintenance and operations did that, so I'm, I'm guessing that, that, that's, that's why it was this long. But we're, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Carlos about this.
Or limit the time.
Yeah, it's just like when, when you do your, uh, your, your ROP committee, when we do our reports, when the, when Measure V, so they need to be short. Not to say that, I mean, Chris had a whole, a whole year to, uh, to report o- o- on this and that's fine. But from now on, it's only, it's only on a month-to-month basis. Yes, exactly, so, yeah. And the other items and, and, and item K and, uh, item L, yes, they can wait because they're not pressing issues. M, action items, consideration of, in action approval of the following items. M one, contract, contract between Calixco Unified School District and Jose Muirive for mandatory district wi- wide backflow testing. Carlos?
So I have Mr. Vega, go ahead and...
So, thank you, um, board, uh, every year, this is a, a, a process that has to happen every year. Uh, we could have backflow inspection, uh, and this backflow inspections are normally done by certified, uh, backflow inspectors. We do have so many now, uh, raise for example, if I'm wrong, there are right now, uh, over workload issues and there's a pressing issue right now with the city that is asking us to conduct this inspection soon. Uh, did the city give us a timeline, Chris?
They didn't give us a timeline, but they said as soon, as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
The states after them.
So our backflow inspector that we have in house is just overloaded with work. So we're asking just this, for this one year, the, a, a, you know, to, for you, the board to approve us going out just outside the district to get this backflow certified so that we can, you know, get it, get this off the list.
Okay.
You say backflow, what is, what is it, what is the concept?
The backflow, Chris, you wanna explain what?
Said, um, a lot of people call it the caballito, it's, it's right in front of the schools, uh, has two, two wheels. It's to prevent, uh, when you have a break, it's to prevent the...
The shut-off valve?
Well, they act as shut-offs too, but
Yeah.
their purpose is so that you don't contaminate pot- the potable water, so.
Hmm, okay. So why do we need a whole year? I mean, why can't we use six months?
So the, the services are just, if you approve it, they'll be done as soon as possible, not for the whole year. It's just that they, the certifications have to be done on a yearly basis.
Yeah.
So if you, the board approves this, we're gonna call this person to come in and do those certifications and it will be done, what, a week, two weeks?
No, it, it'll take longer.
It'll take longer.
Because sometimes they gotta turn off the water and if there's people, uh, using the site, they, so they have to kinda work around, around the sites. But, um, we normally use one of our plumbers and send them to get certified for backflow and make repairs and what have you. Um, but, but, uh, he, he has a lot of work right now, especially with the, the, the stuff that we're ta- we're ta- Um, but, but uh, he, he has a lot of work right now, especially with the, the, the stuff that we're ta- we're tackling.
I move we approve. M one.
I'll second. This is a motion by Romero, second by Alvarado. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes unanimously, five zero. M two, memo of understanding between Calixco Unified School District and Parent Institute for Quality Education, also known as PK. For all the CSU schools sites to provide parent training for the two and, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year.
I move we approve.
Romero makes a motion, Calderon, uh, seconds the motion. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously, five zero. M three, proposal and agreement, uh, between Calixco Unified School District and Parent Hall for the purchase and installation of furniture. For Kennedy Gardens Elementary School classrooms and administration building.
I do have a comment before we go. Um, I have received calls saying that, uh, the furniture. And from this company is like three times or twice as more expensive by other companies. And um, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we went out to bid or wh- what are this furniture for, I mean.
So this is, so that's a good question, Mr. Calderon, because. The way we procure these purchases is through a JPA. So there are, and if you see later, I think it's M ten and M eleven, there are two resolutions in there so that we can continue. To big, to uh, piggyback on the bids that we normally bid under this JPA, within which we get special pricing. Uh, so you have furniture and then you have other better quality furniture. This furniture, we get lifetime warranty, any to breaks, it's replaceable. And this is specialized furniture for classrooms, it's the same furniture that you see in the sixty.
I understand it, I understand.
So, so, it, they're a little more expensive, but you get better quality. This is American-made furniture that, you know, it's gonna give us low delivery.
Well, again, and I'll give you an example of one of the calls I got, and it was from, from the high school. That, um, the desk was, what they wanted was, and with this company was three times more expensive. And um, so there was other companies that had same or similar products, but third of the cost.
And they're probably less quality, but look, we encourage furniture is an investment. So the last thing we want is to buy something that five, seven years from now, we're gonna have to replace it again. Because of poor quality or the way they fabricated. Uh. Can we go back and start using off the depot or other, you know, stores that sell less quality? We could, but like I said, I'd rather invest in something that's.
And, and also, I mean, they were also mentioning that somewhere in the, or in the district, they were getting the. They were actually being told that only with this company could they order.
That was my recommendation, that, because they offer quality and they offer warranty, that was my recommendation to use, you know, them. But we wanna have, we just have a district standard in furniture, Mr. Calderon, that way we don't have mixed matches of, you know, we have, you know. Company X over, over here and then co- company Z over here. We wanna have a, a, a district standard on furniture that is good quality, good warranty, and again, it's an investment.
Well, I can tell you that, I mean, what they were telling me, it was the same product, almost the same product, so. Um, I don't see why we have to pay three times the price when we can get it cheaper somewhere else. And we can get it from another company, it doesn't have to be several companies, you can. I mean, that's my point of view, and I mean, because they were concerned that they had to buy a desk or desk. That were three times more expensive than what they could have, or what they needed to do their, to perform their job. I move we approve this proposal.
Say what?
I move we approve this proposal.
Yeah, and I will second with discussion, uh, to piggyback on what Calderon said, Mr. Calderon said. If they have, if they order from other comp- from other companies, the, those, uh, those requisitions were not approved. So what is that saying about, what is that saying about our process? Only buy from the one that I'm saying. Is this the same company that the, that the person, that the, uh, that the rep came to the school district? And you took around to other, to other, to the schools?
Right.
There you go.
And you said.
Very, very, very volatile.
Sasa, you said that it's a lifetime warranty?
Some of the products have lifetime warranty, the chairs, the desks have twenty-five, thirty-year warranty.
And this is better quality?
It's better quality, it's overall better quality.
Thought we had a structured deficit.
We're using a learning loss negotiation fund.
Okay.
If, if you got, if you, if the board doesn't feel comfortable, you know, we can table it and we can look at other options. Like I said, my reasoning is better quality, better, you know, warranty.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
There's a motion, there's a second.
So, all, all those, yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
All those opposed say no?
No.
No, uh, motion doesn't pass?
I'd say, well.
Who voted no? You voted no?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, um, the, the voting, yes, it was Romero and Magallanes. Voting no, it was, uh, Alvarado, Calderon Junior and Calderon. Thank you. So maybe, uh, maybe we need to discuss this, uh, on the next board meeting, because um. Hmm, because we need to discuss it again and I'll, and I, and I'll be talking to Mr. Gonzalez about this. With Coca-Cola, if you drink soda, I don't know.
And, and don't get me wrong, it's important because we have desks, student desks that are over twenty years old. To a point where we need desks, in fact, we need desks that can fit. We, these kids are bigger now than when I was in high school, so we need desks to accommodate them, so I understand the need, I mean. I went to the high school, there's a lot of old desks that need to be replaced, but. I find it hard to pay three times so much when the wear and tear, we're probably gonna have to replace them regardless.
Thank you. That was M three. M four, proposal between Calixco Unified School District and After School Unlimited to provide professional development services for teachers. Administrators and support staff in the area, also shown emotional learning, also known as SEL.
So move.
Second, uh, move by Mr. Calderon Junior, second by Mr. Calderon, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero unanimously. That was M four. M five, a word of request for proposal number twenty twenty-one dash zero two dash. Oh, well, dash, that's it. Contract is, was that a typo or?
Oh, it's for two years.
No, twenty, twenty twenty dash zero two dash. Contract for preventive maintenance emergency repairs and on-call HVAC repairs. The board would, does anybody on the board would like to table this item until?
I, I like it, I mean, we discussed it, uh, earlier, I, I moved to, to table it. So we can get the, the contract and define it as to what the limits are gonna be when we replace air conditioners.
So, that being said, then is there a limit that the board would like to say, because there's two things in this contract, right?
Well, yeah, that's, I, I want that written in the contract, so when. You reach that threshold, then you have to come back to us and say, hey, we need to replace ten or twenty air conditioners. And in other words, I don't wanna blank check, like, we, we had an earlier discussion about it, I don't wanna touch it again.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's getting late, but there should be something in writing saying, you know, like a check and balance, so to speak. So when you reach that threshold or there is more need to go over, say, fifty thousand. Then you come back to us and say, we need X number of air conditioners.
So do you want to throw an amount in right now? Do you want to throw an amount in right now?
I, I'd say, well, Kiki was saying that edge code says fifty, I'd stay with the fifty.
For anything for bids, that's.
But it's not written in the contract unless you're gonna add it.
I, I think then what I'm gonna do then, I, well. If you table it, then I have to go out and change everything, more than I could go out and repeat it, so I have to repeat the process, okay, so. If I understand correctly, so. You want me to stick to the contract, article contract code for any emergency repairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least that's my vote.
Okay, let me consult with Leo, cause I, 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 alright, I, I, I think I know what you're asking, okay.
But right here, it says, I, I mean, on the con- on the proposal, it's already preventive maintenance, emergency repairs and on-call HVAC repairs. It doesn't say anything about replacement and stuff like that, I think if we leave it as is. Just preventive maintenance, emergency repairs and on-call HVAC repairs, I think we should be fine.
But then who would you have to, to do the replacements? Yep.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing, though, Richard.
That's where it was open and that's why it came to a million point five.
I mean, you gotta pick a company to, um, to do so, you could somehow put in. Uh, a segment in, in the contract that says, um. Any emergency amounts over fifty thousand dollars. Need to go to the board or any amounts under fifty thousand dollars, don't need to go to the board. Whatever you want.
Yeah, I, I'm good with either, I think after fifty, we should.
Now, here's my concern, okay, um, okay. What are the hourly rates for Arctic Air and for Vic? How, how, how do they compare? Because that would be a factor when you. If they, they need to replace, um, a unit who has the highest hourly rate.
Right, so.
But that fluctuates because they go up and down in price.
Wow.
It, it, it's so that the board is clear, and when it comes to a bid, an actual bid, you are subject to the lowest bidder. You have to, you have no choice but to select the lowest.
Sasa, real quick, how does that work then, if it's like a mil- like a veteran-owned, how does that work? Like veteran-owned, you know how there's like certain, uh, parameters on veteran-owned businesses and stuff like that, where. They have to get, be given some type of, um. Not, uh, I would say priority, but there, isn't there something written? Can you look into that also as well, cause that was my question for you, if you could, please look into that to get a little bit more, uh, how that works? Correct, like some, some businesses are, are veteran-owned and stuff like that, and I know there was a big push. I don't know if there was a law that was taken into effect, but I know it was something, I haven't had a chance to look into it, but I know there was something related to that.
So every company that submits a bid for us, that wants to do business with us, one of the conditions is that they have to be registered. In the Department of Industrial Relations, they have to pay prevailing wages. And they have to have enough, you know, businesses have to have enough financial flexibility to be possibly, uh, be bonded. Uh, a lot of small mom and pop shops don't, sometimes don't qualify. Especially for the level of work that we have here in the district with so many HVAC units. Uh, but, you know, I can, you know, do more research and find out. Uh, as to Mr. Romero's questions regarding the rates, this is an RFP. We're not subject to the lowest bidder, okay? RFPs, you have a little bit more wiggle, you have to look at the total value. So for instance, this vendor A, the lowest on the preventive maintenance. If it's a hundred thousand per se, but the hourly rate is more expensive. You know, maybe the totality of value may be more expensive with him, because if somebody else, even though has a little bit higher on the preventive maintenance. A hundred and five, but the hourly rate is significantly lower, long-term, when they do repairs or when they do emergencies, it's gonna be cheaper. For the, the second lowest bidder, if you wanna call it like that. So, when I look at the three, that submitted, uh, that responded to the RFP. The lowest, the lowest in total value, it continues to be Arctic Air. On the preventive side of the house, VIX is the lowest, but their hourly rate, it ranges significantly. So, you know, that's why it's an RFP, that's why I created it in that, in that manner, so that. The board considers the total value of. Right here, the total value, see, Arctic Air, preventive maintenance, ninety-five. VIX eighty-seven, so there's about seven, eight thousand dollars variable right there, but look at the hourly rate. Arctic Air sixty-five, eighty-five, you know, pretty much regular sixty-five, but after hours and weekends relative is eighty-five. Look at VIX, a hundred and forty, a hundred and five, and even the regular hourly rate, it's five dollars more expensive. So that has an, that's an important factor, factor, because again. Depending on whatever emergency happened or how many times they're called, that right there can make a huge difference in terms of what we pay later down the road.
So we can modify this contr- this. Accept a contract that, example. I would recommend, because of the hourly rates, go with the Arctic Air and they're local too.
They're local too, one of the advantages of Arctic Air is the thirty-minute callback.
No, they're not, VIX is whole deal.
So Arctic Air is all central?
I thought, I thought Arctic Air was Calixco.
Arctic Air is, is, isn't it Calixco?
No, all central.
Central?
They're on, uh.
Ross.
Well, still, they have a, a lower, um, hourly rate, which, when they have to bring in and do emergency repairs or changes.
Yeah, they're.
But, but keep in mind what we discussed, they're gonna come up with a plan. And we're gonna have to start changing air conditioners, this is not gonna be like it was before where they just changing air conditioners. They're actually gonna designate all these air conditioners by, say, a year, two, three, four. So, I don't think, I don't think that if they stick to that plan. We won't have the one point five million problem again. Because that way they'll come and tell us, we're gonna change, say, fifteen or twenty ACs, and these are the ones that we're changing. And that's when we go out to bid, which is cheaper.
So what do you, how would you propose this one then?
Well, I'm not an expert on contracts, but I, I think then, then ma- maybe we should table it. And let Sasa come up with, with a solution to it, because. It's important that, my, my thing is, I don't care, well, I do care who gets it, but, um, that we have that safeguard. That it won't happen again. I mean, and again, I don't wanna beat the horse to death, we already went through there, like, spent two hours on this and. Um, I need, I want the contract to read like it should be, that there is a limit.
Not an open contract.
So, then, so what, basically what you guys want is, is parameters for the contract?
Yeah.
When it comes, when it comes to spending and things like that, right?
Yeah.
And, and what I would say is parameters is great, however, what are the parameters? I guess that's, I'm still kinda stuck in that direction as far as, just for clarity purposes. Um, we have the maintenance component, which obviously it's very clear, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but then the other piece is the repair and replacement. Uh, do we wanna set a parameter for that as well, like we have set a parameter for?
Real quick, and it's a theme, if it's on here, it says emergency repairs, it doesn't say emergency repairs and replacement.
Yeah.
I mean, and that, that should say it automatically, I mean, that, that's logic right there. You're not, you're not, we're not making a contract for, contract for preventive maintenance, emergency repairs and replacements and on-call HVAC repairs. We're not doing that, I mean, that's, that's not in the contract. That's something that we need to put in the contract, if this for maintenance, just be specific. It has to be just be for maintenance, emergency repairs, not to include replacement of AC or maybe it should include a repair of AC if it's just one. But not ten or twenty or thirty throughout the year.
Okay, I think I, I move that we table this item until we get something better developed.
And as a reminder, sorry to interrupt, um.
No, that's fine.
As a reminder, this company was to augment our staff, so we need to allow our staff to do their work too.
You know what, on that, on that note, Sasa, could you reach out or, Chris, can you reach out to see what Imperial does, can you reach out to see what Alcentro does? Um, and Brawley, to see if their HVAC people replace their own ACs? I know for sure, uh, I, I've seen Central do it, but I don't know any other school districts.
Yeah, we can do that.
Looking, looking at just one more thing before we end this item. The meat of the, uh, of our expenditures or their, or their expenditures over the last three years. It was on units replaced. There was four thirty-nine and, and one ninety-six, so that's, uh, that's almost seven hundred thousand dollars. In units replaced, which was not in the contract to replace units, right?
Well, I, I don't know, they said it was open.
Okay, so let's table this item, so who made them, who made the motion to ma- to table this item?
I did.
I think, uh, Lencho did it, you're gonna second?
Okay, so Lencho made, made the motion, Lorenzo Calderon makes the motion to, uh, table the item. Romero seconds the motion, all those in favor to table the item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion passes five zero. M six, uh, change order number one to the agreement with Oakview Constructors Incorporated for the district office relocation. Of seven modular buildings projects in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven. of seven modular buildings projects in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars to cover owner-initiated changes.
Well, what's that?
Okay, hold, I, I'll, I'll second it, but did you motion it?
No, no, I, I was gonna, just motion, uh, for discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Our motion is then.
Okay, so motion by Romero, and second with discussion by?
I'll, I'll, Lento.
Well, well, Mr. Calderon, go ahead.
Discussion, all right. So my question is, what is this for, these funds for? Um, it says, it's for the modulars, seven modulars, correct?
Hmm.
So what you have here is a change order to two things. The landscape of the district office, north, uh, north, south, east, and west, the landscape. And also the landscape, you, you know where the Callexico sign got moved into, right next to Warfield, right here? That area that has dirt and pile of gravel, we wanna landscape there too. So it's landscape for the district office, this is not related to the seven modular building. It's, it's the same contractor, the same, we're, we're asking to have them do that work also here, at the, at the deal. Uh, landscape, irrigation, and also do the exterior paint.
Well, Mr. Vega, if we read M six, has nothing to do, I mean, it doesn't read anything of what you just said. Or maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Well, it says relocation of seven modular building project.
And, and the reason I'm bringing, bringing this up is because this here, a hundred and fifty-seven, is almost what cost us to move these trailers from point A to point B. I mean, if you look at our pre-list, uh, we paid, um, one ninety-eight to move the trailers. And we're paying a hundred and fifty-seven for?
Landscape.
Landscape.
Landscape, we're paying a district building, just this building.
What are you doing? Wow.
Three, all buildings.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't read landscape, I'm sorry, but.
The, the attachments.
Oh, attachment?
Are in there, so within the change order, the attachments are in there, and there is a graph, there's a design of the, the landscape.
All right, yeah, wow. Well, it's actually a hundred and fifty-seven, and then it's gonna cost us, well, we already paid a hundred thousand to remove the trees. Almost, approximately a hundred thousand. Fifty to trim them, and forty-something to remove them. So it's gonna take us, uh, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So, okay.
You know, it, uh, it's very misleading, it's very misleading, but, uh, anyway, so we have a motion and a second. Right, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, lo, uh, the.
Lento?
Lento, Lento seconded. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So Margarita, uh, and all those, uh, uh, against, say no?
No.
No, motion doesn't pass, I'm voting, uh, in favor, uh, Mr. Romero and Ms. Magallanes, voting against, are Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Calderon Junior, or Mr. Calderon? M seven proclaiming the great, uh, the Great Kindness Challenge Week on January twenty-five to January twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Calderon Junior, uh, proclaiming, so is that a motion, or is that a proclamation?
It's a proclamation.
So do we?
Proclamation.
So do we need, do we need a, a, a roll call? No? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero unanimously, thank you. M eight, quarterly report on Williams Uniform Complaint, January two thousand and twenty-one.
I move we approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, M nine, second reading of the, of revised board policy and administrative regulation thirteen twelve point three, uniform complaint procedures.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Calderon, second by Mr. Romero, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, mo- uh, motion passes five zero unanimously. M ten, resolution authorizing joint powers agreement between Callexico Unified School District and H O N to purchase furniture and equipment.
I think that's, we're gonna have to table that one, right? We're gonna table, uh, M ten and M eleven.
Yes, so M ten, so is there a motion to table?
So move.
Second.
Motion to table by Mr. Calderon, second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Aye, so motion passes four one, voting in favor, I'm Ms. Magallanes, Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Calderon Junior, myself, Mr. Calderon, voting against to, to table, is Mr. Romero. M eleven, resolution authorizing joint powers agreement between Callexico Unified School District and All Steel Incorporated to purchase furniture and equipment.
So make a motion to.
I motion to.
Huh?
Table.
Table, okay.
I'll second.
Motion to table the item by Mr. Calderon, and second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 I oppose.
Uh, and, and Mr. Romero votes no, so voting in favor, I'm Ms. Magallanes, Mr. Alvarado, Mr. Calderon Junior, myself, Mr. Calderon, voting against, uh, table the item is Mr. Romero.
This is a resolution, shouldn't this should be, uh, by roll call?
That's true, no, well, no, we, we are voting to table.
But still, should that be a roll call?
No, because we're not, we're not actually voting on the item, we're voting to table the item, we're not voting.
We're gonna bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that right, Jen, or no?
It is correct, no, it's, it's not correct, it didn't pass, so we don't have to do a roll call.
Correct.
Okay.
Oof, okay, M twelve, certificate employment report, Carlos.
Recommend that the board approve the certificated report with the addition, addition of the following seven counselors for a total of ten hours each for the Parent Leadership Institute, uh, for Ms. Brissette Wong, Grace Knoll, Samuel Gutierrez, Liliana Garcia, Dresden Hester, Azucena Gonzalez, and Alejandra Segur.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Mo- motion by Mr. Calderon Junior, second by?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, vo, vo, uh, motion passes five zero. M thirteen, classified employment report.
We recommend that the board approve the classified employment report as submitted, with the exception of denying, uh, the request for unpaid leave of absence request by Celia Belindo.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion to approve by Mr. Calderon Junior, there's a second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero unanimously, thank you. And, uh, item N, reconvening to a closed session, we are not coming back to closed session. Uh, item O, we, we are, we're now back in open session. P, announcement of actions taken in closed session, was, was there anything that we, no? And adjournment, uh, I need a motion to.
Well, I, I do, before we close, um, we, we said that we were gonna follow the governance calendar, and there is some items that should have been included, so please, uh, make sure that they're on for next month. Uh, there was, the calendars, it actually speaks to the items, so we didn't discuss them, and we're gonna wait until next month, and each month has a certain item that has to be discussed.
Okay, yes.
And that's for the record.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so item Q, adjournment, and do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Calderon, second by?
Me.
Second by Mr. Alvarado, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero unanimously, thank you for our meeting, it is now twelve twenty-three.